Good afternoon. We'll get started here. Andrew, any opening prayers or comments?
Yeah. Yes, thank you. I will just take one second. So today again, we're going to hear from PBOT, Bureau of Transportation, as well as Water and BES. And I did want to just note, sort of, for those watching at home, we are posting all of the performance dashboards that you've seen in these sessions over the last, you know, few weeks, including those today. They are up online. And so we're going to be looking over the next couple of weeks for final feedback from, again, council, from the Budget Committee, from the bureaus, as well as from the public. And so to the extent anybody wants to go on, we will have a way to sort of send in some comments and thoughts on what those key performance measures should be. Take all that into account and then counsel as they go through the final budget process. Again, we'll be finalizing those key performance measures and dashboards for every bureau. You can find those at portlandoregon.gov/cbo/performance. And with that, we can go.
Zoliah, take it away, please, and walk us through your proposed ad packages.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update on our budget request. Today, I am joined by Greg Jones, my Assistant Director, and Alyssa Maher, Executive Director of Business Operations. Over the last year, we've spent an enormous amount of time with the city council and the community discussing the need for additional transportation funding and potential revenue options. We still remain hopeful that the state legislature will take action to increase transportation funding during the current session. I would like to thank all of you for your work over the last year in helping us engage the public about the city's needs for additional transportation funding. I believe that two positive elements came out of that process at a minimum, and one is some restored confidence and transparency in this bureau's ability to manage its resources, and also agreement that the bureau needs additional funding. We also have learned that it's clear now that the cost of an action is going to lead to higher costs in the future, and it's going to place a larger unfunded liability for future generations. So I've structured my presentation today in three parts. First, there's an overview of the Portland Progress effort, a brief summary of our current budget allocation, and a summary of our decision packages. As you're well aware, our ability to steward our existing public resources is directly linked to the public's willingness to support additional transportation funding. So we have gone above and beyond the Our Streets conversation to build an organization that's transparent, outcome-based, and accessible to the public. This has been done through the development of the Portland Progress Plan. Portland Progress is a two-year action plan to improve overall services and increase the public's confidence that we are using our limited resources as effectively and efficiently as possible. It spans all aspects of the bureau's operations and sets the agency's sight on serving Portland's core values of life, safety, health, and economic well-being. This plan is important because it holds us accountable for our actions to build and manage the transportation system, and will continue to build upon the public's trust in our work. The plan includes 176 ambitious and actionable steps that are grouped into six themes: preserve what we have built and operate it well, embrace Vision Zero, build a future where all can grow and thrive, effectively manage city assets, and contribute to the health and vitality of our people and planet. And we also developed a sixth theme that's an internal work plan, and it's called Shoring Up the Foundation. The themes and action items were heavily influenced by the outreach efforts from Our Streets that included two citywide scientific polls and public opinion polls and 11 public town hall meetings. From that public outreach, we heard that funding unmet maintenance and safety needs were the highest priorities and of almost equal importance. The first two themes in Portland Progress, preserving what we have built and operating it well, and embracing Vision Zero, correspond directly to the Our Streets priorities on safety and maintenance. In addition to this outreach, Portland Progress action items are informed by the multiple long-range plans that guide all city agencies: the Portland Plan, the Comprehensive Plan, Climate Action Plan, and specifically to our bureau, the Transportation System Plan. With the combination of the Our Streets conversations and the Portland Progress two-year work plan, we have a clear path moving forward for PBOT. The next three slides illustrate where our current funding goes, and the remainder of the presentation focuses on the resources we need in order to keep us on the path forward. We have -- do you want to hand this stuff out now, so people can start looking at it? The majority of PBOT funding goes into three areas: 26% of our funding request is allocated to maintenance activities, 32% to operations and safety, and 38% goes to capital investments. And I ask you to please remember that capital improvements are not all new programs. Our capital improvements budget focus heavily on rehabilitations and rebuilding existing assets. For maintenance, our budget is allocated to cost-effective and efficient maintenance activities to keep the transportation system functioning. For example, our Fog Seal and Two-Inch Grind and Pave programs allow us to reach our goal of conducting preventative maintenance on over 100 miles of pavement. In the next fiscal year, we are adding crack sealing of our busy streets to our pavement maintenance toolbox. This is a low-cost solution that's going to help us better preserve our system with our limited dollars. Go back one. I'm on safety. Number seven? Yeah, thanks. PBOT's requested budget allocates 32% to the operations of the transportation system. This work includes keeping traffic signals operating, streets clean, managing parking, and managing the use of right-of-way. In the requested budget, we are expecting that engineering staff will review over 1,000 requests for traffic safety investigations, 18,000 requests for parking enforcement, and 16,000 complaints about abandoned autos, just to name a few. At the same time, our operations staff will be using our Vision Zero approach to developing Portland's Transportation System Plan and expanding the use of existing safety programs like the High Crash Corridor and Safe Routes to School. And Portland is not alone in embracing the concept of Vision Zero. On a national scale, there's bipartisan support in Congress. AARP has supported the vision, and local jurisdictions across the country are implementing Vision Zero concepts. PBOT's budget allocates 38% to capital improvements. Again, a large chunk of our capital improvements funding goes to asset management and preservation. The majority of our capital budget comes from grant funding, which requires we go through a competitive process to get the projects funded. And additionally, most of the grants require a match. The amount of grant funds has declined as a result of the federal and state funding issues, but despite that, we have been able to build some key safety projects. We have been able to build priority safety projects in East Portland, such as adding sidewalks and crossing improvements. We were able to build these projects as a result of Representative Fagan's leadership in obtaining funds through ODOT to complete the work. Over one-third of all the revenue allocated to the capital program pays for asset management, things like bridges and overpasses and signal and streetlight replacement. Other key projects that are opening in the next year include the Telecom Crossing, completing the streetcar loop, and the completion of the St. John's Truck Strategy. So I briefly described the three main areas where we spend our revenue. The majority of the revenue we are requesting in our 1516 budget is from external sources and restricted to a specific use. These external sources include grants, bonds, and interagency agreements. PBOT's discretionary revenue that gives us the most flexibility in our spending primarily comes from parking and gas tax. Our 1516 budget relies heavily on the kindness of strangers. 61%, or approximately 141 million of our total revenue, comes from external sources, or the kindness of others. From the pie chart, you can see that 9% comes from bond proceeds, 14% from interagencies that are dedicated to specific services, 11% from grants dedicated to specific projects, 11% comes from gas tax needed for debt service and other obligations, and 16% comes from gas tax that is available for transportation programs. One of the things that really stands out about Portland's success in creating a complete transportation system is how often diverse agencies, neighbors, and business groups have been able to work together to develop new partnerships that allow us to accomplish multiple objectives. I would like to highlight two key partnerships that you see in our budget request and are excellent examples of our focus on Vision Zero and equity. The first is the funding from the PPS School Bond that is strategically making traffic safety improvements at Portland schools using a safety and equity lens. The second is a renewed partnership between ODOT and PBOT to use new federal safety funding to fund key safety improvements at high-crash locations. Despite the challenges with our discretionary revenue, we continually strive to make the most of our limited resources. Some examples of areas where we have improved efficiencies and been able to save money is with the conversion of our streetlights from high-pressure sodium to LED.
If you could just wrap up, please. These microphones may still work. I don't know how long this cord is.
Sweet. Test, test. Okay. That's on? What? Yeah, okay. All right. I think I was on LED. We've implemented a new low-cost pavement preservation technique, Fog Seal, that allows us to preserve many more miles of streets per year. And we're in the process of scoping utility coordination software that'll help us coordinate with all the utilities that work in the right-of-way to minimize the amount of pavement cuts which degrade our pavement system. We just received three innovation grants: the Honeybee Bike Counter, rubber sidewalks, and graffiti treatment. The rubber sidewalk funding is especially exciting, not only because it provides asset management resources, but also because of its potential benefits to property owners in our older neighborhoods with a dense tree canopy. While these sidewalks are expected to be more expensive to install, we believe they will work better with the tree roots and therefore save adjacent property owners' money in future years. Unfortunately, there is only so far that we can go in meeting our transportation needs without additional funding. The cost of an action is enormous and immediate. Over the last year, you've heard quite a bit about PBOT's assets and the decline of our system's condition, especially our 5,000 lane miles of pavement. PBOT owns and maintains 13 asset classes from street signs to bridges. Our pavement system is the highest-valued asset we own. It valued at $6 billion. Over the last three years, the amount of money needed to meet our goals for the condition of our busy and residential streets has increased. In 2013, the unmet need was $75 million. Last year, it increased to $91 million. And with this year's analysis, the need is $118 million a year for the next 10 years. Fixing a street in fair condition is less expensive than fixing a street in poor condition. As the pavement deteriorates, the options for repair change and become much more expensive. Portland is also home to about 15% of the state's population, but suffers 22% of the state's crashes. The number of people killed on Portland roadways has remained stubbornly flat over the last 20 years. In 2013, 36 people died in traffic crashes in Portland, more than double the number of homicides in the city. The economic and societal costs of these crashes are immense. The CDC estimates the cost of lost work and medical costs due to traffic fatalities to be $422 million a year in the state of Oregon. The National Safety Council pegs the cost of traffic fatalities, injuries, to be $150 million to the city of Portland alone. Achieving Vision Zero for Portland would result in significant savings across our economy and eliminate the serious and fatal crashes that congest our roadways and irrevocably alter the lives of the families involved. While much of our existing infrastructure is integral to the safety of our system, we also have many missing links that limit people's access to a complete transportation network. Through asset management, we know what the physical condition needs are, and we know where we need to fill in missing links to ensure the functionality of our system is complete. This means that we have a complete system of sidewalks, paved streets, access to transit, and pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. We have a lot of work to do. We have approximately 341 miles of missing sidewalks on our busy streets. It would cost $700 million to build out that system. In our ADA transition plan, we have a goal of building 700 to 1,000 ADA-accessible corners per year. We still have approximately 20,500 corners that need to be upgraded to meet ADA standards. We have 56 centerline miles of dirt and gravel roads. To pave those and bring them to city standards would cost $600 million. Both new transportation revenue and allocation for major maintenance and replacement projects through this budget process would help us manage the existing infrastructure system and address our missing links. We have real potential to prevent the further decline of our system and improve the safety for all users. We can assume that with our current pavement budget and the new revenue from Our Streets funding, and the increase of the state gas tax of 10 cents, that we can keep the percentage of very poor roads on busy streets from getting worse than they are now. Do we want to hand that out here? Do we do that? So we have just an example of how much money per pavement type would be needed over the next 10 years, per year, for our busy streets and then our residential streets. This is for your -- it's probably familiar to you guys. We used it in the Our Streets, but it's updated. Next, I'll talk about our transportation decision packages that were included in our budget request. We are generally very happy with the recommendations of the CBO, especially the resources to address some of our critical maintenance and safety needs. Our top priority request was for $5 million for safety and maintenance projects identified in the Our Streets effort. CBO recommended funding $2.2 million. The request would pay for safety improvements on and around 122nd Avenue. The proposed safety improvements are targeted at expanding access to work, schools, and services for low- and moderate-income individuals and families via public transit. This project meets the maintenance, equity, opportunity, and complete neighborhood goals. PBOT's second and largest request was for $23.3 million in major maintenance and infrastructure replacement projects. CBO recommended funding $5.5 million. I would like to thank the council for increasing funds for this program. I have received positive feedback from numerous neighborhood and business leaders that this commitment of unanticipated revenue to core infrastructure needs is a smart policy decision and a sign that the city is committed to finding additional transportation revenue. We look forward to working with the city budget office to have a process that supports this new program. We requested funds for the youth bus pass. We requested funding to cover this because PBOT has been asked to provide funding for this program in the past, although it doesn't have resources allocated for it. This is not included in our five-year budget, so if we are to absorb this, it would cost us $5 million over the next five years in service reductions. We requested $300,000 to expand our Safe Routes to School program to middle-school students. The CBO recommended $60,000 to provide funding to Opel to hire two youth organizers. We requested a position to support our agreement with BPS and Trimet to focus on combined investments around key transit corridors. Additional studies and analyses are required to support these efforts, and this request would support research and recommendations in key corridors where we expect growth to occur, such as Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, Southeast Division, and the Burnside Stark Corridor. We requested funding for a recommendation of how to deal with state highways in the city. It would provide funding to work with the state legislature. ODOT, neighbors, and businesses develop short- and long-term strategies to improve and ultimately transfer these roads to the city of Portland. We requested funding for an LID value capture. The request would help the city determine how future city revenue realized after a local improvement district is formed could be used to lower costs for making improvements to gravel streets. And we also requested $25,000 as our ongoing cost for traffic control support for last Thursdays. We requested funding for our Smart Trips programs. Smart Trip is the program that encourages alternative transportation choices. We want to make sure that everybody who lives, works, or runs a business in Portland knows about the options they have for getting around, because by choosing to walk, bike, take transit, and carpool, we increase fitness, save money, reduce traffic congestion, and help maintain a livable environment. The package would specifically have extended Portland's Smart Trips program to East and North Portland with a focus on culturally-specific outreach in the Jade District, New Columbia, and Hacienda areas. I'm now going to turn this over to Mary Ann Fitzgerald, who is representing our Budget Advisory Committee for their perspective.
Is this -- oh, they're back. Okay, we're back. Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Hales, Commissioner Novick, Commissioner Fritz, Saltzman, and Fish. I'm representing the full Budget Advisory Committee today. We met several times between September of 2014 and January of 2015, and as a group, we reviewed the financial forecast, the capital improvement plan, and the PBOT service charges and fees. As you could see throughout the budget, it's essentially status quo. That's really not sustainable due to the over-reliance on the gas tax, the parking fees, and grants. At our January meetings, we discussed performance measures and decision packages, but we were more of a sounding board. We didn't really make any specific recommendations on either the decision packages or the performance measures. We wrote the back letter that is in your packet on January 20th, and we realized after the budget was published that a few things changed in between January 20th and February 2nd. So I'll just talk about our three main recommendations that are in our letter today: to expand transportation revenues, to focus on core PBOT priorities, and enhance the role of the back. So the first one with enhancing revenues, we really wanted to thank Mayor Hales and Commissioner Novick for their efforts to pass the street fee. And several of us are working with our local legislators to fund local priorities and support the gas tax potential. But we're looking at East Portland, the Cully Neighborhood, and Capitol Highway in Southwest Portland as potential high-priority projects that we would really like to get funded in our neighborhoods. We also supported the utility license fee, but that was before your decision on January 28th to get rid of that policy. So we always felt that there was a strong nexus between the utility license fee and using the right-of-way with the maintenance of our streets, but that's, you know, that policy's changed since then. The third thing that we wanted to support is using more of the general fund. Things like the streetcar have benefits to economic development more than actually the transportation system. And last Thursday is another example where there are no benefits to PBOT, really, but we're using some scarce resources that could use general funds to support the same kind of services. And then the interagency funding. I think last year, the Bureau of Environmental Services cut the street cleaning funds, and they've not been restored. And, you know, PBOT and BES share a lot of responsibility for the streets and the stormwater quality. But last fall, I just want to commend you that BES and PBOT signed a coordination charter, and I was so excited when I saw that, that, you know, it really gives me a lot of hope for a lot of win-wins between the bureau as we work together more in the future.
Mary Ann, we thought that after reaching that deal, the Iranian nuclear deal would be just a snap.
Yeah. Well, we're going to continue working on that one, both of them. So then, the second one is kind of self-explanatory, the PBOT priorities of safety and Vision Zero, and then maintenance for all users, whether you be pedestrians, bicyclists, freight users, all the users of the system. Maintenance is very important to everyone. And I get a lot of questions from people who know I'm on the back, you know, "Why can't they just pave the streets?" So, you know, that's definitely on everybody's mind. And then, the third recommendation, to enhance the role of the back from a budget committee to a bureau committee, we keep recommending over and over again. We feel that, you know, we have a lot of groups. I also serve on the Transportation Policy Expert Group and the Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and, you know, sometimes these committees just kind of flow together. And you want to be able to give the director good advice and thoughtful advice, and the membership is really good in terms of the business community, the modal communities, you know, the elders in action, and other interest groups in the neighborhoods. So I think that we work well together, but we like being a sounding board. We like following these measures, and we would like to continue. But we also want more time to deliberate. You know, getting the decision packages on January 20th didn't really give us time to deliberate on the decision packages. So we would like to be more effective in how we work with the director and the staff on our advice. And finally, we've also recommended several times district liaisons, similar to the liaisons that the planning bureau has, because it's a very complex budget with a lot of needs and a lot of priorities, and having a single point of contact. East Portland is lucky enough to have one, but the rest of us don't. So we think citywide, we would definitely benefit from more single-point of contact on these issues. So we have hope that the new two-year action plan and the focus on Vision Zero will benefit all Portlanders citywide. And, you know, we just want to thank you for allowing us to serve, and we hope to continue serving in the future.
They're amazing, by the way. Have a great back. I'm lucky? I do, absolutely do.
So is this question time, or were you?
I can keep talking if you want me to, but I have nothing else prepared.
Cut him, Mike. So what is the status of the $1.8 million contribution grant, federal grant for bike share?
Well, we still have the money from Metro, and we are planning on launching in 2016. What that looks like, I don't have details to share today, but we will be launching the Bike Share program in 2016.
Seriously?
Yep. Yes.
Yeah, I find that hard to believe.
Okay.
So I guess I would suggest that we liberate that $1.8 million So I guess I would suggest that we liberate that $1.8 million, because it looks like there's a lot of urgent transportation priorities? I realize it has to go back through J-PAC, but I don't think that's as much of an obstacle as you made it sound to me once.
Okay. It would, it returns to Metro, and it goes into a competitive pool. It's not a guarantee that it comes back to the city of Portland. I've never been through that process before here, so.
Then how do you know it's not a guarantee that it won't come back to us?
Because it has to go to another decision-making authority, so I.
Well, I guess I'm astounded that we think Bike Share is still in the offing. Do you have a corporate sponsor in the works? You don't have to name it, but just tell me if there's anybody even at the table.
Yes.
Commissioner? We are talking to potential corporate sponsors, and one of the advantages of Bike Share programs is that in other places, it's been a way to bring in outside money, and so it's not just, it's not just putting up public money. And I think that compared to, for example, all the governments agreeing to waive millions and millions of dollars in tax revenue in order to build a convention center hotel, I think this investment, just as a tourism investment alone, it has merit, in addition to trying to promote biking, which improves health, et cetera, et cetera. But clearly, having a significant corporate sponsorship should be a major part of the package.
And we're still sticking to our guns? There'll be no operational subsidy of a Bike Share program from government?
Yes.
So I have some questions. So you've done this breakdown of what might be done in terms of enhanced preventive maintenance, but back up for us a little bit, and that is, in the last year, you significantly increased your maintenance effort. You did a lot of fog sealing, and yet this talks about grind and pave here, or crack seal, two-inch grind and pave. Can you tell us sort of, what's the unaddressed inventory of streets that could get fog sealed but haven't yet? Do we have 100 miles of that? Do we have 3,000 miles of that? How many miles? In other words, if you just went crazy with fog sealing, what's the potential universe of that work?
Right. It's a component of the -- oh, I'm sorry, Steve knows.
So my name is Steve Paz. I'm a city engineer. Just kind of estimating off the top of our heads, we've got 4,800 lane miles, of which about 3,000 are local. And when you look at the percentages of where the streets are, in order to do fog seal, the streets have to be towards the upper end of the curve, meaning in very, in pretty good shape.
Right.
And so doing this off the top of my head, not having the numbers in front of me, I'm guessing we're maybe in the 400 miles, maybe 500 miles, that might be a category of streets that could do that.
That are ready to fog seal.
I'm not.
Guessing, you're guessing.
I'm guessing that they may be in that category, possibly, but that's a guess off the top of my head.
So in terms of enhanced maintenance funds, why wouldn't we do those first?
And there's kind of a couple of different things. One of the things is, the ones that start getting more expensive is, once we start getting past two-inch grinds and on the collector arterials, because on the local streets, they deteriorate very slowly, and their cost for repair is much lower than the collector arterials. So we probably get a bigger bang for our buck trying to catch the busy streets, meaning 120 Seconds, the Burnside, it's the Powell, I'm not going to start to say Powell, but we don't own it. The streets like that, before they fall farther down, more than a two-inch grind, because at a two-inch grind, you're talking a couple hundred thousand a lane mile, not counting the other things that have to go with it with stormwater and ADA ramps. But if it starts going farther down, it doesn't take much to your 500,000 to a million or more per lane mile.
Steve, generally, we use the fog seal on the residential streets, right?
Only on the residential streets, that's correct.
So can you explain why that is?
Yeah, because the residential streets fail differently than the collector arterials. The busy streets fail from heavy loads, so the trucks and buses are what wear out the pavement. On the local streets, the heaviest thing that goes up and down it is the garbage truck once a week and that sort of thing. And so the local streets fail more by environmental factors of weathering and oxidation. And so those are, that's where fog seal is a good candidate, is on those types of streets.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, Mayor, if I may jump ahead, I want to make a note that's relevant, what you just said, on the performance indicators. One of them is lane miles of contract paving, and contract, generally, we do the two-inch grind and paves with our own resources. Contract paving is for more than two inches, and the contract paving is in there as a performance indicator, not because contract paving is the most important thing we do, and in fact, the most cost-effective thing, is to do the two-inch grind and paves where we can. But that's there, I think, largely because we were asking CBO for a significant amount of money for contract paving, because there's some streets that really do need to be fixed, even though they're expensive. And CBO basically said, "Well, if you're going to ask us for money for contract paving, we want to know what you were able to do with it, so let's create an indicator for it."
Okay, other questions for Leah and her team?
So it's, also, if you may, what's the thinking on the youth bus pass?
The thinking, Commissioner, is that P-Bot has periodically been asked to absorb the cost of the youth bus pass, so our request is kind of a preemptive strike. We're essentially saying, "If you want to do it, please give us additional money to do it," rather than asking us to do it for our own resources.
Fair enough, but let me reframe my question, or let me make a statement. I believe the youth bus pass is essential, and so I'm wondering what your thinking is in far as to how to fund it, Mayor.
That's, that's a discussion that's now underway with Trimet and the school district, our other two partners, so Steve and I will be having those conversations with our two partners, both of whom have additional resources, just like we do right now.
And I'll remind the councils, I do every year, that the youth bus pass, it's a Portland Plan strategy.
Right, and as a practical matter, Trimet doesn't put on any more buses to help get kids for school, as I know from sitting on the 44 during spring break versus sitting on the 44 not in spring break, where we're packed like sardines on, if you happen to catch the wrong bus. So I think that discussion needs to be had with Trimet. Is it actually costing them anything? And when we first initiated it, how many ever years ago it was, they thought they were going to be putting on more, that they were going to be providing more service. So, and I even question whether they're losing much revenue from not having kids buying youth tickets, because I don't know how much kids, students use it, except for getting to and from school. Even if they do, I would suggest it's a good way to get young people hooked on transit and teach them that this is a really great way to get around town.
Agreed. Katie or Carl, did you have a?
Yes, I did. I wanted to ask a little bit more about the citywide enhanced transit corridors plan, your ask around that. What corridors would that be planning for?
It's likely Martin Luther King Boulevard, Southeast Division, and Burnside and Stark corridors.
And what about the Powell and?
Inter-Powell Outer Division.
Yes. Is that part of this, too?
We have existing staff that is working on Inter-Powell Outer Division, so that's covered.
All right.
You're welcome.
And then, let's see, there's something else I wanted to ask about. One of the reasons, you know, I actually don't have so many questions, because you do have such a great citizen advisory committee, and they're already doing such a great job. But I did want to ask about on your dashboard, I wanted to reflect that I would love to see a measure on there that showed how well you, how well P-Bot covers the whole city in terms of not just roads that need infrastructure repair, but roads that don't have anything on them already. There really needs to be, I keep asking this almost every bureau, making sure that deficits get measured so that they don't get lost, and it's very important, I think.
Thank you for that comment, and we share your sentiment, and it came up during the special appropriations hearing, and our Commissioner Novick directed us to include those assets in next year's report, to start working on that, so thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Leah, the dashboard process is a work in progress, and there's a lot of, there's a healthy amount of rumbling, generally, about whether it's the right indicator, and if not, if there's a better indicator. And I have been trying to find the right way to ask this question in every presentation. I'm now going to finally ask it as plainly as possible, which is, of the dashboard, of the performance measurements that are in your dashboard, what are the least useful measurements in this package?
Oh, I think they're all useful, actually.
Okay, let me stipulate, let me stipulate in the presence of Andrew that they're all important, and that in a perfect world, we wouldn't delete any of them, but.
All our children are above average.
Yes. Yes, I love all my children. There's no, no one comes first.
I do.
But as a, I'm just asking this as a colleague. Oh, go ahead.
Well, just before Director Treat answers, the process of getting to the key performance measures was intended to call out some of the least useful measures, which the bureau may still track for other reasons, but really, just to put the most important on there. Now, I will say, and I think as we've gone through this process, you've asked some very good questions, not, some bureaus were more successful at that than others, you know, and I think that's part of the evolving process of this, but the goal really is that all, whether it's three, four, five, or six measures, that they are all useful, I think P-Bots are.
Okay, so I better get my question in again before the city attorney jumps in to qualify my question. Okay, these are all very useful dashboard measurements, and at least in your case, there are none that start at 100% or at the top of the food chain. I find those the least useful, if other bureaus have things where, you know, all you can do is go down, I think that's probably unfair. If you had to take one or two out and replace them with one or two, what would you take out, and what would you add?
That's an interesting question. I would have to, and I'm not prepared to answer, I actually want to keep all of these in here. If you look at our Portland progress that we published, these indicators are all reflected in Portland progress and then more, so we've actually expanded our performance dashboard internally, extensively beyond what CBO is doing. So I think they're all great, and if you, if you look at our bureau and the amount of vastly different services that we provide across our six different groups, it's really hard to call one out and saying it's not important to the public or to us. So these are very important to us in terms of transparency in the services that we provide, and I don't know that I would swap any out. Safety and maintenance are my top priorities, so if I had to pick two, those would be them.
Safety and maintenance. How responsible are you for the on-time performance of streetcar?
That's a good question. We run through, I'm going to have to ask Greg to help answer that, through the operating agreement with PSI.
So PSI is our nonprofit organization that assists us in managing the streetcar operations. They, along with Trimet, work annually to prepare a schedule for the streetcar operations in terms of frequencies and service, but it is really the cities and Trimet's operators that are responsible for maintaining that schedule and staying on time. And we use a next bus system to try to track that on-time schedule, and that's one of the things that came up in the audit this year, was a need to have a better way of tracking that on-time performance. But when it comes down to it, it's really the city supervisors and the operators that are responsible for keeping the streetcars operating on an on-time basis.
If I could add a little to that, since I sit on the PSI side of the joint operation, I think everything Greg said is true, but I'd also reflect that the streetcar operates on a street system that's maintained by the city, and there are lots of things that we do in partnership with the city to try and make it work better. For example, you know, PDC is now paying for signals at Cootch at 10th and 11th, which will help speed the streetcar through there. You know, we rely heavily on Peter Kuntz and the Signals Group to make sure that the streetcar can get priority at appropriate places, so it's very much a hand-in-hand partnership, and the city has been a great partner, continues to be on that.
So on that question, have we made all the capital investments that we need to make in signal systems along the streetcar route in order for it to operate with full, with better priority? Should we make the policy decision to let the vehicle that's carrying 17,000 people get through and make the ones that are carrying one or two wait?
Well, so at the last board meeting, there was a, okay, sorry, I didn't see your light go on. There was a set of recommendations that came from PSI to the board about signal improvements that they were requesting to improve on time and performance and the speed of the system. So they, there's, and we agree that there are improvements.
My fault.
That could be made to increase the accuracy and reliability of the streetcar.
Right, and do those improvements have a capital cost, and do we know the number?
We do not. They were just presented to us last week, so we have not had a chance to, unless you have.
So we don't, we don't have any additional estimates yet for those costs, but there are two sides to the picture. So as Chris and Leah talked about, there are operational improvements by giving priority to the streetcar. There's also the capacity of the cars and the number of spares that we have available, since there is, streetcars that drop out of service because of maintenance issues or accidents, having adequate number of spares to be able to operate the streetcar at the 15-minute frequency that we're trying to get to is also an area where we're a little short right now.
I just wanted to chime in here as a regular streetcar rider. I take it every day to work and back home, that I saw this, and what was actually more important to me as a, you know, a citizen who uses it, would be like, how often it's not working? And I know it's relatively reliable, but there have been times where I've needed to ride to work where the next streetcar was a long time in the future. And so, I mean, that would be a key performance indicator that I would be interested in, what's the relative amount of time that the streetcar's not in service that it should be, which, again, I understand is a low number, but it's not zero.
Yeah, that would be how often we don't manage to dispatch a car for a run.
Or, yeah, similar.
Leah, can't resist, since you're here, we have a few extra minutes, and actually, I'd like to cut into as much of my time coming up so we can, so we can get BES and Water out and in as quickly as possible. So I now, since I no longer have a car, I take the number 12 bus to work, or I carpool down Sandy. And interesting, the last few days, Sandy has been very rough going west, and the reason is, at 28th, between 28th and 27th, there's a construction project. And there's also just further, further west, there's a big intersection that often has got a flashing light rather than just a red-green. But there's been a tremendous amount of backlog, and one of the, and so I was curious today. I thought, was there an emergency? Was there, you know, something? I mean, what was the, because it happens every morning. It turns out that in that construction project, they have been given, I guess, a permit to take a lane out, and the lane is now filled with the, with the cars, the vehicles of the people working on the construction crew. And I thought, you know, I'm all for helping, you know, create good jobs in our community. It did strike me as undue courtesy to take a lane out of a two-lane road that is a main thoroughfare rush hour, so people could park their trucks and their cars. And I don't know whether that's part of our code, or a courtesy, or an abuse, so I would, I throw it out there.
I will have to follow up with you, but I will. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but Christine will follow up, and I appreciate the input.
I'd just like to comment on the idea of the dependability of the gas tax when, in fact, you've got more people driving Priuses, carpooling, bicycles, walking, and public transportation. What, are you taking that into your, the forecasts? That's number one. I've got two more. On the PCA, PCI data security, there's lost revenue that's been mentioned in here. What's being done to get that back? And on the LED lights going in, what is the pay pack to pay for, I guess, not a safety factor so much, which is really important, but it apparently would be a less of a power or electrical bill for the city? So those are the three. What are you doing about the gas tax, PCI, and the LED?
There we go. Okay, on the gas tax, we are well aware of the issues, and we use the gas tax projections that are provided by ODOT, and then we then further discount them when we build. that are provided by ODOT, and then we then further discount them when we build them into our revenue projections because of the very issues you bring up. On PCI, we are looking at raising parking meter revenues to the users, so it's a transaction cost for credit cards. So anybody who would be using a credit card on our parking meters, we are exploring the option of implementing a parking meter increase to cover that cost. That's a process that we will have to go through with the businesses in the community before it's implemented. We have until October before it hits us, so we have some time to figure it out, and we have meetings scheduled to start those conversations. And then the LED, it is, wait, I lost your question, dang it, I was so close. I don't know, and I'm gonna ask Alyssa to...
I don't know the payback period off the top of my head. We can, we can get...
What is, eight or nine years?
Ten years.
Ten years.
Yes.
I'm curious on the meter increases. Do you have the capacity with the smart meters to charge credit card users only, or would this be an across-the-board increase, including people paying cash or credit card?
Yeah, it's an across-the-board increase.
Okay. And do you know if, so do you know if those meters have the capacity to only, to charge a different rate to credit card users? I'm thinking, you know, most stores you go into, if you, if you spend less than $5, they tell you flat out, you know, there's a 50-cent transaction fee if you use a credit card, which most, you know, not most, but a lot of parking meter transactions are under that threshold, so I'm just curious whether that's even possible.
It's just, it's, do they have the ability to differentiate between credit cards and cash?
We could have different tariffs.
I wanted to come on up.
Marnie Glick, Parking Operations. We could build different tariffs into the machine. I'm not sure if they would recognize, I mean, somebody would have to say, I'm doing a transaction with cash and doing a transaction with a credit card, and it would post a different rate. I'm not actually sure we're allowed to charge a different rate for cash and credit card, so we'd have to look into it.
Marnie, what's the current split between cash and credit card?
About 85% of our transactions are with a bank card, either credit card or debit card.
People stop carrying quarters for meters, it's not part of the culture anymore.
Right, but I almost wonder if it's, and it may be impossible or illegal, it seems like it would be much more palatable to sell a meter increase based solely on credit card usage rather than, than across the board, just even from a perception standpoint.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same question, so I'd like you to look into that, to find out whether it's legal, because it doesn't matter to us. The machines, they are capable of taking cash, though, huh?
Yeah, and just, we would look into logistics as well.
Yeah, we also have costs around removing the coins, so it's, be careful what you ask for.
Yeah, when I asked you that question during our meeting on the, your two-year action plan, I asked you the exact same question, because I always use quarters, and you were telling me, in fact, it cost us more to handle coinage than it does to take a credit card. So was that part of the answer?
Yes. Yes, so with coins, we actually have to, parking enforcement officers will kind of turn into collectors, and then we pay Brink's. Right now, they are actually counting the coinage and depositing it.
I should, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that the cost of being PCI compliant is not going to vary that much with the number of transactions, so if PBOT reduced the number of transactions it had by encouraging more people to use cash, I think that that would mean that the cost of coming into PCI compliance would just be redistributed among the other bureaus that are reliant on it.
The PCI is going to be a per-transaction cost.
So about, of our, just over 10 million transactions a year, about 8.5 million of those are with a bank card, so we, I understand that we would be paying a fee per each transaction.
Okay, so it's not just a lump sum for safety in general? Okay, my mistake.
I'd like to address some points to the first indicator, total number of serious incapacitating traffic injuries and fatalities. You know, safety is very much in the mind of the community. We just saw the Vision Zero report released at the Act of Transportation Summit this weekend. We appreciate Director Treat's leadership and the commissioners on that. And in doing the Our Streets conversation, we basically heard from the community that they value safety and maintenance at about the same rate. I think it was 56-44 is the split we came up with, maintenance to safety, and I'm a little concerned that because CBO's criteria are so focused on maintenance citywide across all the bureaus, that that's maybe flowed into PBOT a little bit more than appropriate, and the safety value is not as present. You know, I think the, it shows up for me in the Safe Routes to School recommendation. You know, I would, that would be one of the first things I would fund with any available revenues, so, you know, I hope we can, you know, put some money behind the Vision Zero concept and adjust our priorities appropriately.
Chris, actually, that's a good point. The CBO recommendation for PBOT adds up to about 5.5 million for maintenance and 2.2 million for safety, and our recommendation is that, since we have more revenue, that council allocate at least another 2.1 million to PBOT, which would go to safety and would thus give us our 56-44 split for this year.
Yeah, and I just want to respond, we do recommend $2.2 million for safety projects in PBOT, so it's not an insignificant amount of funding. I think the question, if you want to divide that between safety out on 122nd, which is the project we recommended funding versus Safe Routes to Schools, that's a good, that's a good conversation for this committee to have.
I think, I'm not asking you to, how to reallocate, I'm asking you to allocate more towards safety.
And less towards other key priorities in the city.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to take a second, and if I can, offer a gold star to Bureau of Transportation and Director Treat for their equity analysis throughout their budget. Their motion and equity analysis that they used specifically for capital improvement projects, and specifically in East Portland, I think, was extremely well done in evaluating impacts on people with disabilities, communities of color, underserved populations historically. The decision to not translate any new materials into, or at least put out any new materials until they've translated all current materials in other languages, I think is a phenomenal understanding of some of the examples of how to best use equity. I also want to compliment CBO in their recommendation of the project, the road rehab project at 122nd, specifically saying that it may be a lesser risk in some sense, but it's specifically that underserved population historically has been underserved, and so that recommendation, I think, speaks to CBO's engagement and understanding of what we're really trying to do here, as well as the funding of the collaboration with Opal and the work that Opal is doing in conjunction with PBOT. So if I have abilities to offer a gold star, I certainly do that in this project.
Can I just say one last thing in closing to Commissioner Saltzman? I apologize if I was flippant in my answer about bike share, it's just something that I'm incredibly passionate about, and it's a program that I'm really excited to launch, and so we may disagree on that, but I'm really excited about it, so I apologize if my tone was anything less than disrespectful.
I would also apologize if I sound overly strident in my opposition to that use of the bike share, but I think we just have opposite points of view.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Both apologies accepted, but confidence in a bureau manager is always a good thing.
But just to end that on a high note, having just come back from San Francisco, the bike share program there seems to be working quite well, and everywhere I walked, and I spent a lot of time walking in a fairly compact city, there were, there were easily accessible stations and people, usually empty, which means they're getting used. So I'm hoping if they can figure it out, we can figure it out, so.
Colleagues, not just because I, respectful of Commissioner Fish's desire to limit the amount of time we spend at BES and Water, but there is, there are two things I wanted to add. One is that Marnie Glick, I believe, is leaving us sometime in the not-too-distant future, which will be a great loss. I'm particularly grateful to Marnie for being very tolerant of my indecision as to whether to proceed with buying parking meters under the Calais contract a year and a half ago, and of her ability to work up a, you know, new RFP, which led to us selecting a different version of Calais to buy meters for, but actually it turned out that in the interim, the cost of buying meters had gone down, so we ended up doing pretty well. And Marnie, of course, as part of the parking team, was instrumental in what I think has been an extremely successful shift in the way we deal with parking for people with disabled placards. So thank you very much, Marnie. And... And we are also losing this year Greg Jones, and I really have a hard time imagining what life is going to be without Greg, and I'm going to read the entire set of talking points I was given on him, then add some thoughts of my own. And today, I would like to formally recognize one of the most steadfast managers in the Portland Bureau of Transportation, Greg Jones. Greg has dedicated 35 years to public service, began his career in the Department of Public Works, and is retiring as our first Assistant Transportation Director. This is his final budget hearing. Throughout his career, Greg's been a leader in transportation planning, arterial engineering, capital projects, and parking programs. He helped deliver remarkable transportation projects with the citizens of Portland, including the Portland Aerial tram, the Portland Streetcar, the East Bank Esplanade, the Interstate Light Rail, Portland-Milwaukee Light Rail, South Waterfront Development, McLaughlin Boulevard, Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, East Columbia-Lombard Connector, Northeast Duberta Streetscape, and Division Street, as well as projects in conjunction with the port, including the Lombard overcrossing North Marine Drive and Airport Way. Along the way, Greg built many relationships, including those with OHSU, PDC, TriMet, ODOT, and FHWF. Greg's commitment to transportation and public service enables advancement to his current position, where he's called upon to guide the overall operations of the Bureau. His institutional knowledge is a tremendous asset, and he will be greatly missed by all of his colleagues. Greg is a remarkable, but very low-key individual who's tremendously worthy of today's recognition of how he's shaped our city. And just to add something in my own words, although I think these are very good and apt, Oliver Wendell Holmes apparently once said of Franklin Roosevelt, "A third-rate intellect, but a first-class temperament." Greg has a first-class instrument, a first-class intellect, a first-class temperament, and a spectacularly wide body of knowledge, and I will very much miss sitting in meetings in which Greg happens to be with somebody who will bring up a topic that, a question that nobody in the room can answer, except Greg says, "Oh, yeah, that first came up in 1994, I think it was November 11th, and here's what, and here's what we did." And so Greg, I'm spectacularly grateful for your service, and I'll miss you very, very much.
Thank you all very much. Okay. Two-minute break, and then we'll start BES.
I didn't, I didn't see it in mine, so...
Yeah, Commissioner Saltzman didn't have it either. Yeah, Commissioner Solzman didn't have it either.
Going to BES, so...
Jim, in the few minutes we have remaining, would you please summarize the position, and then we'll... Welcome.
We're in favor.
All right.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim Hagerman. I'm interim director for Bureau of Environmental Services. Seated behind me are senior management staff for Bureau of Environmental Services, who may appear at the table if the questions get particularly tough. They are Jane Bakery, Watershed Services; Marvita Redding, Pollution Prevention Services; Bill Ryan, Engineering Services; and Steve Barrett, Wastewater Services. And with me is Michael Harrison, representing the Bureau's BAC. So I'm going to be very brief to allow adequate time for the good stuff to come later. Ah, here we go. So to summarize briefly, our requested budget addresses, among other things, the following key issues: maintaining and repairing aging infrastructure, of which we have plenty; emergency preparedness; and protection of system assets, both gray and green. It will require a rate increase higher than inflation, and it's driven primarily by our capital requirements, which we'll discuss in a little more detail later on. Oh, wrong way. There we go. So, a very high-level overview of the budget request. You can see it's $449.3 million. If you look at the bottom, those two large slices of the pie, by far the largest amount relates to capital expenditures. The $104.4 million is capital improvement expenditures; $173.7 million for debt service on revenue bonds sold to finance capital construction in previous years; $117.4 is the operations and maintenance, including Portland Harbor; and then smaller amounts, $29.1 for cash financing of capital construction and some rate stabilization fund transfers; and finally, $24.7 million for general fund, central services, utility license fees, and debt service on pension obligation bonds. So the rest of the presentation is organized around some key priorities and the decision packages in our requested budget that address them. The first is fixing aging and failing public sewer and stormwater infrastructure. Now, we have a lot of assets that are in good or very good condition, but a third of our 2,500 miles of sewer pipes are more than 80 years old. We have 97 pumping stations, many of which are relatively new, some of which will need major upgrades in coming years, and the life cycle on those pump stations is substantially shorter than for pipe infrastructure. So we would like to address this in a couple of ways. We have a capital program support decision package, which would add three positions in support of CIP work. This is actually a cost-reduction package rather than an enhanced performance package. We currently have about 12,000 hours of overtime worked by technicians at the plant in support of capital projects, and we are proposing to add three positions, which would then substitute straight time for that overtime and actually reduce overall expenditures. The second thing is to increase inspections for manholes at greatest risk of failure. That's part of our capacity management, operations, and maintenance plan. And the idea there is that we have about 20,000 manholes at highest risk of failure, and we want to put those on a 12-year inspection cycle. So we're proposing to increase our interagency with the Portland Bureau of Transportation to do those inspections. Just to give you a little bit of an overview of the capital improvement program, you see the chart here. Over the five years, we're spending over $500 million in capital. It's dominated by maintenance and reliability, which should be no surprise. This is as it has been in past years and will continue on into the future, with smaller amounts for sewage treatment, surface water management, and systems development. The next priority is operating and maintaining the public's sewer and stormwater system. The CSO control program, as you know, added a lot of assets to the system, large assets, complicated assets. It also increased the complexity of operating the system, both operating the collection system to capture CSOs and in terms of higher volume at the wastewater treatment plant. We're proposing to address this with a maintaining current service level package, which would add three instrument tech positions to reduce our preventive maintenance backlog at the treatment plant and in the collection system, and a position to support training and professional development to maximize the effectiveness of the employees we have, ultimately to improve asset performance and extend the useful life of those assets. The next priority is building a resilient future, by which I mean preparing staff to operate in challenging times. We talk a lot about subduction zone quakes, that's just one example of an emergency. And on the capital side, trying to identify ways that we can harden our system and upgrade our assets in a strategic way. And we propose to do this in two ways. We believe that, given the obligations that we have for emergency management, the information that we've developed, it is time to add a position to support the Bureau's emergency manager. So we would propose adding an emergency coordinating position for that. And on the capital side, we want to add some outside assistance, this would be through a contract, to help us develop a plan to make the system more resilient. And when I say a plan, I don't mean that we want to do a specific thing in the next five years, but we'd like to answer the following type of question. If we set as a goal, and this is just for example, that we would like to recover from a magnitude-nine earthquake, recover all key services within 30 days, what would it take us to get there in, let's say, 20 years?
I would just like to note for the record that Commissioner Novick was nodding approvingly as you said that.
The next category is providing opportunity and promoting equity. So educational opportunities for students, we believe, build awareness and interest in employment and allow us to reach diverse pools of potential help. And enhanced recruitment also widens and diversifies the applicant pool. So we'd like to take kind of an upstream approach to this, and we're proposing to do several things. First, to add a clean rivers education position, to expand our presence in our programs, educational programs, preferably with the current balance, which is more toward Title I schools, which, you know, generally have as, kind of greater than 50% of their students are on lunch assistance, so it's an indicator of a challenged community. But we also want to use that additional position to develop a curriculum for a cohort program within the Bureau that will take both high school students from underrepresented communities and college students, and introduce them to the Bureau, to different business areas in the Bureau, and ultimately certify them as having completed this curriculum, and we hope get them interested in working for us or in other technical positions down the road. And finally, we'd like to add some support for targeted outreach in our recruitment, which may include advertising, but may also include travel to national conferences for targeted employee groups or groups of potential employees. The next priority is protecting and extending the life...whoops, gone over here. Protecting and extending the lives of city assets, and I'm glad it's not lunchtime right now.
Does that slide indicate why we have the fats, oil, and grease program?
Yes. This was the last time I deep-fried a turkey at home. It's my branch. So, city assets, once built, are vulnerable in a variety of ways. You can discharge toxic things into them that will upset the treatment process at the plant, or corrode the pipes, or contaminate groundwater. And you can add fats, oils, greases, and other types of obstructors to the sewage lines, so flushable wipes being one example, that result in sewage overflows and property damage. And then there are reported spills of unknown materials. Customers make them to us, they expect a prompt response, and so we work hard to be prompt in our response to those calls. So we would propose to address that with a decision package that would add a field specialist position to provide support for increased sampling workloads, and that could be sampling of stormwater quality. It could be sampling in the sewer pipes to help trace contaminants back to their source. And we'd like to add an environmental tech position to enhance the response time for reported spills as well. So to try to wrap it up briefly, here is what the requested budget would mean for an average residential monthly bill. And you can see of the $67.76 for sewer, stormwater, and superfund, about 52% of that is debt service payments, principal and interest on revenue bonds. So we are a capital-driven Bureau. $21.65, or about 32%, is for sewer, stormwater system operations and maintenance; about $5.69 for system improvements, that's cash financing of capital construction; and the remainder being either transfers to rate stabilization fund, utility license fees, central services, and Portland Harbor superfund. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. We can save that for later, and we can have Michael Harrison make a brief statement.
Got a couple. Let me throw a couple on the table, and then both of you can respond.
Sure.
One is, your budget shows $140 million in contingency. Given the completion of the big project, what's that for? And then, secondly, have you and/or the BAC talked about where you are with respect to what you're charging and how current you are on systems development charges? I know that discussion's underway in Parks, so I'm curious.
Mayor, can we hold on the SDCs?
Sure.
Because we're going to have, the Cub is going to present some testimony on SDCs, and we'll respond to that.
Okay.
So let's take your first question.
Okay. We should probably get you a more specific answer on the contingency. We can break that down for you later, but I would say that it's kind of a catch-all category for us, and includes a variety of quite large fund balances. Okay. Okay. So, Michael?
Sure. My comments are pretty brief. I'm Michael Harrison, and I was on the BES Budget Advisory Committee. We met over a period of, from October of last year to January this year, seven times, representing citizens as well as folks representing various industries. Nearly everyone who was on the committee went in sort of fervently hoping that we would find some sort of silver bullet that would allow us to make recommendations that could reduce rates. And despite sort of many probing questions and a lot of research that we did and information requests with the Bureau, ultimately, we came around to supporting the increase that they recommended, simply because, given the great magnitude of the investment that the public already has in the system, to try to skimp on maintenance and capital improvements to the system doesn't seem wise. You know, sort of as compelling is the issue of livability. You can't really ask your citizens to accept sewer backups, for example. Is my mic doing weird things?
Yes, it's not your fault.
Sorry. I'll just speak louder. You can't really expect citizens to expect sewer backups into their sewer and feel like they're part of a livable community, for example. So there's certain things that are just basic services that you can't skim. You can't skip on. So other than that sort of general place that communicates to you and others, is everybody here... We also wanted to reinforce that we came to the conclusion that restructure was maybe not always, but frequently a wise investment, such things like storm planters on the streets, et cetera. We became convinced that they often do allow for, for example, smaller pipes in the ground to ultimately save money. We were also very excited and interested and felt very positive about the notion of better disaster preparedness and making sure that BES is prepared for that as well. So that was our big three kind of takeaways from the meeting. Happy to answer any questions, and thanks for letting us run into the mayor.
Okay. Other questions?
Actually, I do have a question for Michael, which is, when do we get outraged emails from constituents saying that the city is wasting all of its money on this green storm sewer stuff? Can we give them your phone number?
Sure. I'll leave a stack of cards. Pass it on.
Commissioner Novick, I'm also glad you mentioned that, because the Bureau has, and it's largely occurred during your tenure, come to counsel on some big capital projects and shown two different ways of getting to the finish line. One is the sort of traditional gray, and one is gray and green, and then given a return on investment. And we've done that because we wanted to be clearer about the economic benefits of engaging gray and green, separate and apart from the environmental benefits. And everybody can put their own price on what it is to have shade, green, you know, a softer landscape, cleaner air, cleaner water. You can put a value on that, but what we've learned, like in Tabor to the River and some of these other big capital projects, is that gray and green actually saves ratepayers money, which we think that customers want to hear that first before we laud the environmental benefits. But, I mean, that, in all seriousness, that's a very important message to get out, because I really have gotten many, many emails from people saying, "How dare you be asking for more money from the streets when you're spending all your money on these planters and bio swales and so forth?" And I tell them, first of all, it's not fungible money. Second of all, BES makes the case that it actually saves money. And to have independent citizen observers confirming that, I think, is very important.
So I had a question about Package Six. How many existing deputy directors are there? I mean, in BES?
Well, DES.
Okay. I just, I have concerns about, in a time when rates are going up at rates higher than inflation, even though we know that this is a tiny drop in the bucket, you know, ratepayers are going to see that you're hiring more high-level managers, and that's going to set some of them off. I'm just saying.
So, Rob, in fairness, since I put the deputy director position on the table for consideration, it was my experience, for example, at Parks, that once upon a time had an assistant to the director but no deputy director, that some of these larger bureaus are better served by having a deputy director who functions more like a COO. And since BES is a mammoth infrastructure bureau, and, you know, Jim is a person of great talent, lots of energy, but he just, he can't be everywhere at all the time, we felt that having a deputy director in the nature of a COO, someone who kept the trains running so the director could be freed up to do a whole range of other important functions, was useful. And the benefits, we documented through Parks, where the Parks Director was freed up to spend more time with community groups, more time out in the community, more time with council members, more time formulating policy, less time sitting in labor management committees, less time dealing with other nitty-gritty stuff. So the goal, the request we have in this budget cycle is to create a deputy director position in both of the utilities. And your point's well-taken about it is, there's a cost, but we think we can make the case over time that there's also a tremendous benefit to the good functioning of the Bureau.
And I would just say that, my assertion was not that there's no efficacy to this. I think that there is. Often, the very things that you were citing, but I think doing it in a year where you're asking ratepayers for rates that are above the rate of inflation is bad optics. I'm just saying. I mean, I think your points are exactly on point, but at the same time, I don't think it looks good.
I would be remiss if I didn't also note that the rates that we're proposing are well below the forecast. So we have to do a better job pointing out that we've scrubbed the forecast numbers to get to these rates, even with the addition of a deputy director. So there's been a lot of scrubbing and sharpening of our pencil to get to the combined 4.8, which, by the way, if you live in places like Tuauton, 4.8 is going to look like a real bargain, where they're going to look at double-digit rate increases for as far as the eye can see. And we don't want to make a recommendation to council above inflation. The reality is that the kind of rate increases we're proposing are already making Hobbesian choices about things like resilience and other things. And if, I think, our customers in the West Side, for example, knew how much risk there was to the system in the event of a seismic event, they might have a different view of our scheduled investments, even in something like resilience. But we've made a lot of tough choices. They have consequences. And I'm hoping that after making those tough choices, we can also make the case that a deputy director position, long-term, is in ratepayers' interest.
I found it quite astonishing that we didn't already have one, and especially with some of the challenges we've had with the transition in leadership, and Jim is doing a great job, that it really evidences that a Bureau this size with this huge of a budget needs somebody, needs a team at the top to make sure that the Bureau runs properly.
Other questions?
Well, yeah, I just wanted to ask about that debt service. Is that usual, that you'd have that much debt in the rate? Built right into the rate? It's like, it's more than half, isn't it? Half of the rate is debt service?
Yes. Yes. It is a consequence of $1.4 billion spent on combined sewer overflow control, which was...
So it's the big pipe?
It's, the bulk of it is the big pipe. It's not entirely a big pipe, but, yeah, much of it is.
And is that, what is the, what would you like it to be? I mean, other than zero? What would be, is there a standard, an industry standard around that?
All I can say is that the bond rating agencies give us a reasonably solid investment-grade rating despite the debt. So if we wanted to be AAA-like water, you would probably want it half that or lower.
And how quickly is it going to get to that? How long is that debt going to be sitting there?
Much of it's 25-year debt, and so we're looking at 20, 30, or later, before that is all retired.
So we'll all be retired?
Yes.
Okay. This is the chart right here. It's in the budget proposal itself. That's 2043.
Oh, 2043, okay.
Also, Katie, one of the reasons it's difficult for Jim to tell you where we are in terms of an industry standard is that, for better or worse, Portland was a frontrunner, was an early adopter to the CSO. We have peer cities like Atlanta and other cities around the country, they're going to have to undertake similar projects, take on a lot of debt. The difference is, it's going to cost them a heck of a lot more than it cost us. But we are slightly ahead of the curve in terms of peer cities making this kind of investment.
So I just, as a feedback on your dashboard, which, for the most part, I really like. And, what was I going to say? Single-family household bill as percentage of median income. What I really like about that is the fact that you have it on there, that you have some kind of a measure of cost to our citizens. And although I get the feeling that the way it's framed... And although I get the feeling that the way it's framed is so that it will look like a small number, like one, oh, it's only 1.46. Is that the best way to express that, knowing nothing about it? Did you, had to work to get that, or was it something that everybody uses, or?
Well, as part of the CSO controls enforcement process, EPA takes a look at median income, or the sewer bill as a percentage of median income. And if you're below 2%, you're not considered to be highly stressed.
You're what?
You're not considered to be highly stressed financially.
Okay.
So 2% is kind of the, you know, you're really getting quite high.
So it sounds like it is kind of a standard, to use something like that. And would you ever measure, like, households that weren't part of a single-family? I mean, how do they get measured, or is that...
Generally, you measure single-family households. What's interesting is when you start looking at the distribution of incomes around the metro area and, you know, comparing the percentages there, and you do find that there are, you know, subsections of the community that are stressed.
Mm-hmm.
And that's typically why you do low-income assistance.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions or comments or follow-up requests? Dante?
I had, oh, go ahead. I had two questions, one, both of them kind of big-picture ones. One is, what impact, if any, do you think the climate disruption will have in your operations and your budget? Will having more frequent, more severe weather events have an impact on your system, even in terms of operations or costs?
It easily could. And if we want to get more into that, I'd probably call Bill Ryan up. But I would say that anytime you have more violent swings in the weather, you're going to have more upsets in the system, and you'll need to make investments to deal with that.
The second question is kind of an historical one. At some point in the distant past, we built this system. And I would imagine it cost a heck of a lot to build a sewer system from scratch. And I would like to know, do we have any historical data on how it was paid for? What were the sewer rates in 1885, or whenever we started building the system? Because I...
I think it would actually be useful to have that to tell people that, look, if you'd been here when we were building the system in 1885, you would have been paying a much larger percentage of your income.
Steve, there was a very celebrated ballot fight in 1886 over a proposed water district to take it away from the cities, that people thought the sewer rates were too high.
Yesterday was April Fools. So actually, one piece of the story that I think is generally accurate, which is that in the '50s, '60s, and '70s, the Bureau got a fair amount of federal grant money.
That's correct, for, I believe, for constructing the secondary treatment, or was it the primary?
Secondary.
Secondaries, yeah.
Yeah, that is no longer the case. I know you'll be shocked to hear that the federal government is not as good a partner as they used to be.
Other questions, comments, follow-up? Janice Thompson. Janice is here to talk about the Cubs' findings and recommendations.
I think your letter's in the packet. It looks like this. Okay.
I'm not sure. I have some questions.
It was emailed to council.
Janice Thompson, Citizens Utility Board of Oregon. So this memo touches on two topics. One was foreshadowed by Mayor Hale's question about system development charges. So let me start there. There's two categories of system development charges that are mapped out in, you know, state law. It's a very straightforward, kind of more economic calculation process. So there was a reference to Parks' SDCs, and the process is very different. And the one category in the sewer utility world is the sanitary sewer and the stormwater drainage facility. Now, the chart kind of outlines that, I guess about five years ago, the sanitary sewer SDC was reduced and then frozen. And no catch-up steps, you know, have been taken since that time, which means there's this kind of this continued differential between what's charged and what is allowed under state law.
So, Janice, for those of us who don't know, how sanitary SDCs are assessed, could you just give us a couple of sentences on that?
Why don't you do it? He's, I mean, I could, but he's really the total expert, so why not have him do it?
Anyway, Commissioner, you are allowed to take, in our case, since we do a backward-looking SDC, you take the cost of essentially the system major facilities and divide them by the capacity of the system in terms of equivalent dwelling units. And then you get a cost per equivalent dwelling unit. So for a major facility, like a trunk line or, you know, treatment plant facilities, we're allowed to calculate the costs of those, and we can use replacement cost for that under Oregon law. And once we have that whole amount of cost for the major system facilities, then we divide that by the capacity, and we use secondary treatment capacity, EDUs, equivalent dwelling units. And that gives you a cost per EDU, and that would be the cost for a single-family dwelling.
So is that when there's already a sewer system there?
Well, what it represents is the contribution made by prior ratepayers to building the system. And so when you, as a new ratepayer, enter the system, then you're essentially reimbursing prior ratepayers for having built the excess capacity to accommodate you. That's why it's referred to as a reimbursement charge.
So they, you're connecting to the pipe, and you figure out how many units are already connected to the pipe and how much it cost?
How much it costs and what the total capacity is. So when you connect to the pipe, you're essentially buying your share of that total capacity cost.
Because you build bigger capacity. It's not like every time that something comes in, you say, "Oh, we have to, like, increase the capacity." That, you know, the capacity has been built to a greater degree from the get-go. And so that has to be reimbursed.
We're not building a new park to deal with the impact of new development. We're just building a tiny little trail to the new park and charging people for the cost that's already been invested.
That's helpful, because it is obviously very different from Parks, but essentially you're buying into the system with your SDC.
Exactly. But that's partly why it's a more cut-and-dried kind of economic calculation. It is kind of mapped out in state law. You know, obviously, it looks different in suburban communities where there's more new development, but, you know, unless already built-up infrastructure, but, so that's what it is. And like I say, might as well have the expert explain it, but...
So then explain to me the bit about frozen. Why, how could it be frozen?
It, as allowed under state law, it could have been in 2012, 2013, $4,779. Instead, it was frozen at the previous year level of, wait a minute, where is it here? Oh, I think I have. I got to go back.
And did we make that decision, or did state law make a decision?
This was a council decision.
Great.
Council froze a lot of fees and charges during the recession.
And it's really evidence that I've, this is my seventh time through this, and you're making it very transparent, and Cub is also bringing it to light, so that I haven't been asking these questions for the last seven years. Thank you.
So Cub's proposal is to return to what the city had historically done, which is to charge the full amount. So this isn't a situation of like, oh, there's been this chronic shortage in terms of what the SDC has been. The norm has been, charge the full amount allowed under law. It wasn't done for a couple years. Once that gets started, as the chart goes, just like, it kind of starts to build, because you're never, you never did a catch-up step. And so it's time to do that catch-up step. The, in 2013, 2014, which is the last fiscal year for which, like, the books are finalized, the amount, additional revenue would have come to 2.8 million. As I understand it, the estimate for the current fiscal year is about 2.5 million would come in. So, you know, Cub recommends, beginning in the current budget year, 2015, 2016, to start a process of over the next, this year, and then the next fiscal year, to catch up and kind of phase in moving back up to that fully allowed level.
So just, so I understand that, absent that catch-up, what you're saying is essentially we're transferring costs of new developments to the wide base of ratepayers. Is that right?
Right. You know, in effect, 85% is being charged, and one way to think about that is if a customer called up and said, geez, I only want to pay 85% of my sewer bill, they would be turned down. So it is really a situation where other ratepayers are subsidizing, are subsidizing the system.
Can I just, to put this into layman's terms, Jim, if we collected another $2.5 million in SDCs, what would be the potential rate impact, all things being equal?
It would be about a 2/10th of a percent reduction in the increase. And I say that because we are back into a regime where we're using rate stabilization to smooth over all five years of the plan, and so that tends to blunt the immediate impact if we smooth. So that's about what it would be.
But when you think about it, you know, back in 2003, 2014, when those, it was whatever, 2.8 million, that was kind of forgone revenue, if I remember right, the average residential rate increase that year was 5. something, you know, higher than it is now. And, you know, would have been a particularly good year to have been able to provide, ratchet it down even, like you say, by 0.2 or some smaller percent.
Let me be very clear, Janice. If 2/10th of a percent combined with, let's say, favorable interest rates, combined with some other belt tightening and other things, it starts adding up.
Exactly.
So we look at it as a cluster of potential savings...
Right.
...that then have a rate impact.
Right.
And since sewer and stormwater is 2/3 of the bill, then it has a bigger impact than the overall bill than if it was a savings within water.
Right. So that's the recommendation related to the sanitary sewer SDCs.
This is kind of a tangentially related question, but it seems like the best time to bring it up. I've been having an email exchange recently with a constituent who's convinced that density drives up costs. And part of my response to him has been that I think that in terms of water and sewer, we have more capacity than we absolutely need. So actually, when new people come on, it spreads the cost of operating the existing system among more people. And I just thought this seemed like an appropriate time to ask if that is accurate.
Yes, I mean, in a big-picture sense. I mean, it's, these are systems with a lot of fixed costs, and if you increase the number of people, customers, you increase that. You know, you kind of, you have more people to spread over the costs. You know, the more dense development, I think it's fair to say are not, you know, apartment dwellers, you know, smaller households, newer construction with more default, you know, higher levels of conservation for, you know, water-related appliances. I mean, the demand doesn't increase dramatically.
As one minor caveat, I'd just say that if density drives capacity needs above the capacity of the built system, then that would add costs for upsizing. But as long as it doesn't, I think...
And, I mean, how close are we to density requiring expansions of the system?
I can't answer that now.
We're not close because of the design and the resources to be considering. I'm not sure if you can probably...
So the flip side of that question is, I understand your point, and I agree with it, that we ought to be catching up and keeping up with respect to the, what the methodology allows us to charge for SDCs.
Right.
Get that like that. Flip side of the question, though, in examining that carefully, is if development stopped, what would happen to those capital investments and the rates that otherwise would support them? In other words, if we had another 2008, and it wouldn't matter very much what was in our SDC schedule of payments, because we wouldn't be getting very many of them, what would that, what impact would that have?
Right, that would, well, you're left with the choice of either reducing Bureau expenditures or raising rates by more.
So that, the funds that come in through this door go into the pool of capital investment dollars that we spend. We don't segregate, these are SDC capital investments. They're system improvements and programmed replacements, right?
Well, that's the beauty of a reimbursement charge. It doesn't have to be spent directly on capital improvements. It can be used to pay debt service as well, which makes it essentially interchangeable with operating dollars. And so it has a very good rate impact.
Okay, much different than an improvement fee where you have to...
Correct.
Identify the new capacity like in Parks. Okay.
But it speaks to a general, I mean, this is not like, you know, the figures we've tossed out, it's not like we know that's going to be a level of additional revenue from here on out. It obviously links to, you know, development patterns and things like that. But especially now, since we're in a better economic time, it seems like the time to catch up on this category.
So, Janice, I really hope you come back on April 15th, when we're going to be discussing Parks' SDCs, because I think there's a very similar principle involved.
One other, no, one other question. In your table, allowed SDC, is that the equivalent residential unit? Is that the single-family charge? What is that number?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be the EDU charge, and that would be a single-family equivalent, yes.
Okay, but I assume that this, that we're behind the curve on commercial and industrial SDCs at a similar percentage?
Yes.
Okay. This is a system, a rate system problem.
Correct.
Wasn't that we were just being particularly easy on single-family homes?
No.
Okay.
So the, along, kind of similar, but not identical, there's some of the fees that are charged by BES, Cub is recommending boosting up the percentage of cost recovery. One category relates to the fees charged for building plan review and land use review, again, development-related charges. And so if this adjustment's made, it should be phased in. And one question there is what the recovery goal should be. It does seem valid to not have the cost recovery goal be 100%. And one not exact, you know, analogy is, you know, businesses, if they were totally focused on cost recovery, would always charge for delivery fees. But, you know, they want to get more customers in. It's to the advantage to all ratepayers to get more customers, kind of along your line of your earlier question, Commissioner Novak. So Cub suggests that it's, in these categories of fees, an 80% to 90% cost recovery goal is on target. Again, for 2013, 2014, some of the figures BES provided, very helpfully, was that the, these categories, the land use-related, building plan-related fees was only 50%. Or, so about a 30% kind of shortfall. And that, if that 80% goal had been met, an additional, about 100 million would have, you know, come in. Again, this is not a dollar figure that, you know, you then would see from here on out. All these are going to fluctuate. Then in terms of the other types of fees, there's an industrial waste discharge program that charges a fee that's, right now, only at 55% of direct costs. But that's just the direct costs and doesn't include all the... But that's just the direct costs and doesn't include all the overhead items. And so here, the Cub's recommendation is to move it up to 100% of the direct costs, but it's still not 100% of the net cost, because you're, you're just, you're, you're not kind of dealing with the full universe of those costs, if that makes sense. Here, it, the forgone revenue looked to have been about half a million. So, you know, again, for the 2013, 14, if you kind of add it all up, it would be about 4.3 million, which if you're, you know, it would nudge that 0.2% up, you know, a little bit more.
Janice, I misspoke, the 0.2% is all-in, so that includes all the fees that we discussed.
Okay, that actually make, you know, I was a little surprised, okay.
I misspoke.
So that 2, yeah, that's fine. So, and, but that 2% percent, you know, it, you know, it adds up, and like you say, once you kind of start doing it, you just keep it up. So, again, Cub is recommending, in those categories of fees, to move up to those cost recovery goals in a two-year, over a two-year span, again, beginning in the, in the fiscal year budget that's being discussed now, and then the following one.
Thank you very much.
That's very helpful.
Janice, the last person we'll call upon is the distinguished director of the Office of Equity, Dante.
Thank you, thank you, distinguished commissioner, I appreciate it. Just a couple of comments. One, I want to comment and commend BES on some of the work that certainly Marvita Redding is doing in, in trying to work with the youth, high schools, underserved populations, et cetera. And I think the request here, or the Clean Rivers Education Program speaks to that, as I think CBO commented, and she and I have spoken, you know, how do, the best to ensure who we are targeting, getting, I mean, the adequate evidence is there now, just to really, to get concrete information on who we are, targeting, how many youth we're addressing, those kinds of things, I think will really solidify the importance of the program. Also, not in their budget request specifically, but just want to comment on the watershed program and the importance of that, and, and the benefits to that, and, and the equity lens that BES has begun to use in the investment fund portion of the watershed program, I think speaks to their work. And also in terms of their capital improvement projects, have had conversations in the past, and I would ask and challenge them to continue the conversations, because prioritization is often, is based on risk, and there are different types of risk that go into that evaluation and prioritization. And so balancing that and determining the type of risk best used in making those priorities, I think is, is still an ongoing conversation, or can be, to, to best determine where and who is most impacted in the city. So I would just suggest those continuing conversations, but I appreciate the work.
I did have one more question, it was about the, the KPMs. I noticed that for the percentage of urgent public health and safety-related service requests responded to within a two-hour timeframe, that the Bureau has held steady for the last couple of years at 98%, but the projected number for, for the next, you know, for the 50, for this, for this year is 90%, and, and for next year is 90%, which is a somewhat significant drop-off, I think. What's the dynamic in there, and is there, is that something that the Bureau sees, has an interest in improving, or is, is 90% a target number, or?
90% is the target. So we're-
It's back to my question about target numbers. Okay.
Okay, other questions, Chris?
During the, the Our Streets discussion, we had a lot of discussion about regressivity, regressivity of various city services, and water and sewer was noted as being extremely regressive. Has there been ongoing conversation around that and what's happening?
Not a lot internal to the Bureau, an ongoing conversation about that. I think the, there has been conversation about potentially enhancing the low-income discount program, and so I think that's where most of the interest has been.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, was, what was your reaction to the Citizens' Utility Board's request? Is that something that the Bureau's considering, or do you have a reaction to it?
Yes. In general, having begun with the Bureau as a rate economist, I'm kind of pro-cost recovery. This is an ongoing issue that we face year in and year out, because obviously there are constituencies for each of these rates, and they impact people differently, and so there is always pushback. So it was, it's, it's kind of nice to get an external perspective on this. I will say that the fees and the SDCs are a little bit different, in the sense that in the fee, we're kind of behind, and so if you go to full-cost recovery, it's kind of a one-and-done, and then it kind of drifts up with general Bureau costs. In the case of the SDC, it can be a little different in the sense that the SDC that's allowed will increase with the value of your assets, and that can, and in our case, has gone up more rapidly than rates in general, because we're doing a lot of construction and adding a lot of asset value. So that's a situation that in principle you could find yourself in every year, where you've got an SDC that could go up by 8 or 9%, while your rates are going up by 3%. So, you know, you, you've, essentially you have to take that every year in, in the decision-making process.
But you are considering it. I, I mean, I didn't get everything that you just said, but it sounded like what you were saying is that, yes, you are considering it, you would like to recover as much full cost as you can, but there's some complexity to it.
I, I can answer that one, Katie.
Yeah.
Because the Cub has made, in this budget cycle, very thoughtful recommendations with, concerning both utilities. And yes, we will be reviewing them and making recommendations back to council.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions, comments? Sure.
Just, just one follow-up to Jim's point about the kind of, you know, average residential rate percentage potentially going up, and with the SDCs being kind of calculated in this different way, the, the percentage of increase being higher. And as I referred, mentioned there, it's kind of an inappropriate and false equivalency to think it's appropriate for those to match up. It's kind of two different beasts. And again, you know, if you don't let the SDCs kind of go, you know, go to the level that is legally allowed, you do have this reduction rate that, you know, like I say, if somebody called up and said, geez, you know, you're only charging developers 85% per EDU of what you could apply, don't you think you should, you know, knock that off my bill? And the answer would be no. So it's a kind of a, it's two different categories, and so it's okay to have those rates not be in lockstep, if that-
True.
Yeah.
Good point. Okay, anything else, Chris Fisher, anything else?
Just to wrap up, Mayor, thank you. First, we want to thank Claudio and the team at the Budget Office for the partnership and the, helping us pull this together. I want to thank Jim Blackwood from my team, who is the liaison to this Bureau in my office. We want to thank the Janice and Cub, and she will be appearing as a, regulating all of our budget proceedings, offering independent advice on behalf of our residential ratepayers, and we're very grateful for that partnership. I want to thank Michael and the, the folks, the citizens who looked at our budget, and this is the last year that we will have a back make a presentation. The recommendation will be coming to council probably in April, based on the Blue Ribbon Commission's recommendations, will be to create a pub, and the pub will function as the standing budget committee for both utilities. So Michael, thank you very much for, for, for your service. And this is also the last time that Jim will be appearing before us as an acting director. And Jim did not, a number of months ago, Jim did not know that his life was going to become this complicated. But when we asked him to step up, he did, and he's done a superb job. And it has not been the easiest few months in his life, so I wanted to especially acknowledge and thank Jim for his tremendous leadership at the helm of this great Bureau.
Thank you, Jim. You're here. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, take another two-minute break and dive into water. Way, please.
Good afternoon. I'm David Schaaf. I'm the Director of the Portland Water Bureau. And I'm hoping you have our presentation in front of you. And you will be relieved to hear me say that despite the fact that we have 31 slides, I'm only going to hit, I think, eight of them. And I will try and tell you where I am as I'm moving through it. So I'm going to move right to the third slide and talk about what are our priorities. They say right in front of you, excellent water, protecting the public health, providing water every hour, every day, firefighting emergencies. One of my predecessors, Ed Tenney, used to refer to it of good, clean water and lots of it. Those are our priorities. Or one of the internal phrases we use is the four Cs of water: clean, cold, cheap, and constant. All those things are our priorities, and that's what drives what we do. If you go to the next page. I'm going to talk a little bit about our performance measures, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the dashboard. And I'm not sure if we come back to that a little bit when we get to the CBO's piece. These are key performance measures. We have 27 other key service levels that we track. But these are our basic performance measures, many of which are industry standards. The first one is the average time that customers are on hold. And our goal is two minutes. We are -- one of the issues we have with the dashboard concept is that it's a pretty universal: red, bad, stop, caution; yellow, be careful, think about what you're doing; green, you're generally good to go. And in this case, we have a red arrow upward. And the reason why our red arrow is upward is because our average call time went from 90 seconds to 91 seconds over the course of two years. And we get 500 calls a day. So, you know, we think, one, yeah, technically, it did go up, but it's not very significant. And, two, it's significantly below our standard. 91 seconds is quite a bit below 120 seconds. Now, just so that you don't think that we're cheating and we've set an incredibly easy standard, the office or the Omaha Metropolitan Utilities District has a standard of -- they'd like to hit three. They're at nine right now. The L.A. Department of Water and Power is at two hours right now, and they have limited callback ability. So you can't even leave them a message that says, "Hey, I have a problem. I want you to call me back." And the last little bit I'll give you is that six of the 16 energy providers in the U.K. are able to meet their two-minute standard of -- with 60 million calls a year. So we actually think we're doing pretty well here. The second one that I want to talk about is the number of unplanned events leading to customers out of service for more than eight hours. And as a general rule, we do a pretty good job of that. You'll see a picture later on in my presentation about the one event that we had last year, the Burnside Event, where we were out of water for 22 hours. It was a major main break. But as a general rule, we're doing a pretty good job on this. We have a standard of no more than two. The percentage of high-risk assets addressed, that is where are we looking at the highest risks that we have in our system, and are we addressing those? In general, we're doing a pretty good job. We have a standard of hitting at least 80% of those, and right now, we're at 95%, 96%. The number of violations of state and federal drinking water quality regulations, that's a pretty good standard. It should be zero. It is zero. We've had a couple of trips in the last couple of years that we consider to be one-off events, the boil water notice last year being the most obvious example of those. And then the number of violations of state and federal environmental regulations. Again, we -- the trend is no change. Our goal is zero. We've had two in the last two years. One was where we had water going out of our Powell -- our new Powell-Butte facility that put chlorinated water into Johnson Creek. That was an error on the part of our contractor. We fixed it. We haven't had it again. And the one before that was where we were -- we put rock along the bank and created a ramp to get a boat into the river in Bull Run. And you can't do that without asking permission, and we didn't ask permission. So, again, those are one-off events that I don't think we'll be seeing again. And then the last one is maintain the revenue bond credit rating that we have. We're a AAA-rated agency. We're one of only a dozen or so in the country of water utilities that has a AAA bond rating. Our only objection to this particular dashboard is a blue dot means nothing to most people. So I would either like a green dot or a gold star, because you can't do better than what we're doing. You can't get better than AAA budget rating. And the idea behind the dashboard is to have the layperson, the citizen, be able to look at it and say, "Red, that's a problem. Yellow, hmm, what are they doing? Green, that looks like they're doing the right thing." So those are our comments. We had a great conversation with Ryan this week where my entire team yelled at him. And we had -- we got a lot of input back and forth, and we're going to continue working with the CBO's office. They've given us a lot of ideas about what to do in the future and improve these key performance indicators.
Before you go to the rest, I do just want to take this and thank you for raising your concerns. And I just want to take 10 seconds to raise our response. When putting together dashboards, one of the challenges is whether you're measuring actuals or whether you're measuring against goals. And one of the things we ran into, being that this is the first year, is that a lot of bureaus don't actually have goals established yet. And so we made the decision, which we wanted to make on a consistent basis, to go ahead and measure those actuals. And we also talked about the issue of statistical significance, because a lot of these, and you've seen these in other dashboards, small changes are resulting in green or red arrows. Because statistical significance, in some cases, can be measured but not in all, it was decided, again, we wanted to be consistent across all bureaus. So while David's right, the red arrow is indicating a negative trend for a very small change, he will be glad next year when he reduces that by a second or two and gets the green arrow down, even though it will also not be statistically significant. As this process evolves, we will continue to look at these things. And I think one of the points they've raised, which is an excellent one and is in the future, is how do we show visually whether a bureau is going to achieve its target? And I think when we get to performance check-ins, that's going to be a key component of that. So whether or not the actual trend is going up or down, do we expect them to stay within target? Because that's also a key component. And hopefully, the sheet that we hand out with all these, and that is online, explains what a blue dot is, explains what the arrows are, and explains what those trends are. And so hopefully, citizens who are reading this will have that key so they can tell.
And Andrew, maybe for a certain select set of indicators where you're so conspicuously best in class, in honor of David, there'll be like a little trophy.
Yeah, trophy or gold star.
Trophy, gold star works.
Actually, Commissioner, speaking of best-in-class indicators, I would like to see -- and this might run afoul of your rule, that we shouldn't have an indicator where the answer is always 100%. But I kind of wish we had information on, like, percentage of visitors to Portland who say that the water here tastes better than their water at home. Because I do think that the fact that we have water that tastes really good is a major city asset that we should celebrate and people should know about, because I actually think that might affect some people's location decisions.
Moving on to --
Can I just jump in here? So this is another dashboard that has two indicators where we're doing better than our target. So that gets me thinking about, okay, well, what do we really mean by target? Do we really want to get to two? Because then we can just say that we're perfect for this first indicator when we're actually doing better than that now. And the same thing's true for the percentage of high-risk assets addressed. I understand that the standards are, you know, across the industry, or at least the subset that we want to emulate, are actually doing worse than we are already doing, which sort of raises the question of, are we trying to get -- are targets things that we're trying to get to? And if targets are worse than where we are, that's confusing, right? So I just -- I want to sort of raise that question to be considered as we move forward with key performance indicators.
By the way, if I could just note that, Steve, you're reading my mind recently when Oregonian had a front-page story in a series on the drought in Oregon. And, you know, the national news is the drought in California and all the water shortages. And I kind of felt bad about that, because someone coming to Portland was reading about this tremendous drought without any sort of qualification, that we had the Bull Run watershed with 19 billion gallons in reserve and a backup water supply that could give us up to 100 billion gallons a day, and that it's one of our great assets, is we've got this protected water supply. But it wasn't quite clearly spelled out in the headline about drought in Oregon.
So I've been corrected about two things, or one thing. We take over 1,000 calls a day, not 500. I apologize. And one thing that's important to note is, when we had the billing crisis before my time, yay, we had, at one point in the call center, a big digital clock on the ceiling that everybody could see. You couldn't miss it when you walked into the room. And that was our hold times. We've gotten rid of that clock, because we've driven it down from that 10-minute and longer hold time to we're now under that two-minute target. And if we start to drift up to that two-minute, it's not a target. We're not trying to get there. But if we start to drift up there, we'll be looking at, what are we doing? Do we need to look at more staff? Do we need to look at more and better options for our customers to pay and be able to do some of the things that they want to do online, more than having to talk to our people in person?
I might suggest the introduction of the less-than sign and greater-than sign. I mean, you know, if it's less than two, that's good. If it's greater than 80, that's good.
I'm moving on to Slide 8. What do we do to support those priorities? So one of the things is to maintain and improve our system. 75% of our CPI is spent on what we call the three Rs: replacement, rehabilitation, and repair. That's primarily distribution mains, its hydrants, its meters, its services, pump station. We're going to build -- rebuild a major pump station or build a new pump station starting this summer, the Fulton Pump Station. Actually, it's going to be called the Hannah Mason Pump Station, the first facility we've had named after a woman in our history, the former wife of a mayor who owned the property that we -- that we're building, once owned the property that we're building on. The Greenleaf Pump Station, the Willamette River Crossing, which we've talked about, a major capital program, generator up at Headworks, facility security, the roads up at the Bull Run, the conduits, repairs, fleet equipment, and groundwater electrical supply. And we're continuing to use asset management. It's the industry standard in assessing our risks, analyzing the benefits and the costs, and weighing the alternatives to best maintain our system. If you go to 13. So what are our challenges? The aging pipes and facilities. That picture over on the left is what I referred to as the Burnside Break, and that was the key performance measure where we had one outage of more than eight hours, an unplanned outage of more than eight hours. That one was around 22. It cost approximately $135,000 to fix this as an emergency measure, and over half a million dollars in costs estimated for business and traffic disruptions. Regulations such as LT-2, which we've talked with this group several times over the years. We have the Powell-Butte facility online. We have the Kelly-Butte facility online. We are working through the land use process for what's referred to as the Tabor Disconnection Project. And we're going to be starting work on the Washington Park Reservoir in the next year. In addition to meeting the LT-2 regulations, we're also meeting risk, which is the other slide that you see up there. Those facilities are designed to meet today's revised seismic standards and our understanding of what our risks are. In addition to that, we are working on strengthening what we refer to as our backbone, our transmission lines, the main lines that bring water to our customers, so that we can harden them as much as possible. We have hardened our facilities, our conduits. We have at least one conduit that's hardened all the way from Bull Run into Powell-Butte. The Willamette River Crossing is another good example. We have six crossings, six active crossings under the Willamette River, or going over the Willamette River. Two of them are on the Ross Island Bridge. We do not expect the Ross Island Bridge to survive a major earthquake. Three of them in the central core are over 70 years old. One of them is 113 years old. The Willamette River Crossing, while a very expensive project, is designed to make sure that we will be able to provide water to our customers on the west side. If we do not have that, and if we have the major earthquake that we expect to have, and the three conduits that we expect to fail, fail, then it will be six months or longer for water to be on the west side of Portland. So that's where we're spending, or what our challenges are. If we could go to Slide 16.
David, I just want to interrupt there and say, the investments you're making in hardening the system to survive an earthquake, those are investments that are saving the city of the future.
Absolutely.
Because if we don't have water after the earthquake, people will simply leave. The city will cease to exist. So these are among the most important investments we make.
Absolutely. This -- one of the things, for those of you who don't know, the Water Bureau helped in a major response to Hurricane Katrina by sending two groups of approximately 30 people and all of their associated equipment, backhoes, dump trucks, et cetera, to New Orleans in October and November of 2005 to help put the water system back together for New Orleans. So we've learned how important it is to have water in a big city. New Orleans was a ghost town when I was there in October 2005. Slide 16. So what are our resources? You can see what we've got. Just going to touch on a couple of things. Our major resources are our water sales revenue. Then, of course, bonds, our rate stabilization account. We're going to use $2.2 million from that account this year. And the other revenues includes our capital revenue, so that what we refer to as petition mains, when a developer wants to build a development, they have to pay for the mains to be put in, SDCs, inter-agency reimbursements, and that sort of thing. Then if we go to 18, so what do we do with that $211 million? The -- our operating budget is about $77 million. The general fund transfer is one thing that often grabs a lot of people's attention, and that consists of about $6 million in the utility license fee, about $4 million for the general fund overhead. So that's where we're paying for the services that we get from the CBO, the city council, the attorney's office, HR, payroll, accounting. All of those are paid through the general fund overhead, and then pension obligation bonds. Slide 22. What's driving our CIP? Risk mitigation. I've already talked about that a little bit. Public health protection, that's what we do. We are the first and foremost stop in making sure that we provide healthy water for our citizens. Waterborne illness and death is one of the leading causes. Waterborne disease is one of the leading causes of illness and death throughout the world. We do such a good job of it that you turn on the tap and you don't think twice about whether or not it's safe to drink. There are plenty of places in the world where you just -- that is just not the case. So public health protection is up at the top. Regulatory compliance, we've already talked about. I think you can pretty much go through that slide on your own. Let's go to the next slide and talk a little bit about how we're spending that CIP. The primary portions of the CIP, and we're shifting it actually, more to maintaining and replacing our distribution system assets. The lion's share of our CIP is in the distribution. So the pipes, the valves, the hydrants, the mains, the meters, the pump stations, all of those fit into the distribution system, including the Willamette River Crossing. The other big ones are the transmission and terminal storage, primarily, although there's a little bit of Powell-Butte in this upcoming next year, little bit of Kelly-Butte. It's primarily the Washington Park reservoir over the next five years that makes up such a big piece of that pie. And then the conduits. We have three large conduits, conduits that I can stand up in, 60-inch conduits that run about 25 miles each. So we have 75 miles of really big pipe. We have no idea what that pipe -- what shape that pipe is in. We've had several breaks in my 10 years. I think we've had at least five, maybe six, good-sized breaks where we've had to do emergency repairs on our conduits. It is our plan to start spending some time doing some assessment of those conduits and then strategically deciding how are we going to repair, replace, or rehabilitate those conduits. One of the things we did last year was a major break on the Washington County Supply Line, and we took advantage of that break to fix it on the outside and then put people on the inside, fix the inside, and then do a survey of a relatively short section, 800 or 900 feet. But in today's environment, safety environment, it's a very different process. You used to go down there, give a guy a skateboard, phew, they'd go scooting down the pipe until you got to the end. You don't do that anymore. When we did it -- when we did it with the -- on the Washington County Supply Line, we had the Fire Bureau there. We had their major trench rescue people there. We had OSHA there. We had a lot of people there to make sure that everything we were doing was safe. And we're learning how to do that, since we haven't done it in so many years. That's -- I'm almost done. If you go to Page 29, so what is the rate increase going to get us? We like this slide, because it shows where we are. Our average customer is going to pay $31.61 a month for 500 cubic feet of water, and I'm supposed to know this off the top of my head, 3,750 gallons, I think.
3,748.
Oh, 3,748, sorry. I was a couple gallons off. So we want to get a sense --
That's a cubic foot.
A hundred cubic feet is 748 gallons. Or one cubic foot is -- So where the -- the rate increase that we're proposing, a 7% rate increase, will amount to the equivalent of $31.61 for our average residential customer. And if you're interested in knowing what it would cost, like a Safeway, or a Kentucky Fried Chicken, or a Dry Cleaner, I have that information as well. But as Jim was saying earlier, we tend to focus on the single-family customer. And then the very last slide is, we sell water for 1.9 gallons for the penny. While that's gone up, it is still the best deal in town. You cannot get a -- any other utility for as low a price as we provide water and we deliver it right to the homeowner's tab. I am -- so that's the conclusion of my presentation there. I just want to touch bases on a couple of things, our key decision packages. We have a very small one. We have two very small ones. One of them is converting the Bull Run Ranger to a permanent full-time position. We've already done that with the council, but when we were working on this with the CBO, we had some miscommunications, and we only created a limited-term position. All we're doing here is converting it to a permanent second position. That person should already have started, and so now we have two full-time security officers whose job is solely to patrol in the Bull Run. And the second add package is to request the additional funding necessary to fund the interagency with the CBO for the dedicated staffing that will be staffed to the Public Utility Board. And with that, I'm -- I guess I turn it over to you guys. Okay. So I think we're -- For questions?
Yes, I do have a question. I was wondering, had you -- did you consider putting a cost measure on your dashboard for cost to the ratepayers?
Well, that's -- I'd have -- we'd have to ask the CBO's office on that one. We've looked at various cost measures, and our own, we have, as I mentioned, 27 different service levels. And we look at cost in a couple of those levels. But the dashboard is really more from the CBO's office and, you know, thinking about what would work best. So I would say -- I would say no, but you're looking at me like --
Well, I am. That characterization is catching me a little by surprise, because, again, the dashboard, we've worked with bureaus very closely. We certainly hope that, from the bureau's perspective, what's on the dashboard is really important to your operations. I think Katie may be picking up on the fact that BES had a cost measure on their dashboard.
And I realize that I really liked seeing that on their dashboard. And what it told me when I looked at it as a citizen, a user of both of those services, is that I can see from your dashboard that you are very proud and have run a very high-quality organization. But then that efficiency piece, I can't see it anywhere. So that when you see how much you pay for it, then you get a sense for both the quality and the efficiency.
And I think I heard some of the conversation that was going on, and if I'm correct, was that the measure that Jim was talking about, the percentage of --
Median income.
Median income?
Yeah.
So the EPA uses that same standard for water and sewer, 2%. We're at 0.5%. So, the EPA uses that same standard for water and sewer, 2%, we're at .5.
Mm-hmm. Well, then I would suggest that you share that information with us citizens.
Because it does, we look very good compared to that.
Uh-huh. And I, you know, and Carl and I have been over here talking, and we keep thinking, I keep thinking, I almost want to see the dollar amount, I mean, honestly, just because of the, how much it communicates, and because if you're somebody who doesn't have the median income, and you may not know what it is, but you know how much your, your rate is, and so, and then if you somehow had a, a target that was to either to lower that or to at least keep it, keep it within a certain amount, that would communicate a lot to people that use your services.
Katie, I think this broader issue of how we communicate water and sewer, stormwater issues is spot-on. I mean, you know, we had our rate hearing review a couple of months ago, a citizen who came and testified began by asking, you know, what's the split between water and sewer on, on her bill? And we, we often hear from people, say, "My water bill is, is too high," and the first thing we tell them, "Actually, your water bill is, your bill is one-third water, two-thirds sewer, so really upset. Call me back as the sewer commissioner, and we can talk about it." But the, we have to do a better job of explaining, you know, how the bill is put together, what it pays, what it compares to, compared to what, as any young woman would say, I mean, all those things, we have to do a better job. And I'm hoping that when each of you that are here today sign up for monthly billing online, you will, if, if you do that, I'm hoping that we will be able to send you better targeted information electronically that describes what you're paying for, what the value is, and give you other indicators, including give you a little warning notice if your, if your water spikes and you weren't aware that maybe there's a leak in your system or something. So, we, we think we can do a better job explaining the, the whole utility business to our customers, but it's very complicated. I'd settle just for getting clear that one-third is water, two-thirds is sewer, stormwater, and then building from there.
Yeah. Okay. Just wanted to get that in there.
I actually, I receive, as I expect many citizens do, the, the Water Bureau, uh, letter thing that comes in the mail, and I read it with great interest each time.
The bill staffer?
Yeah.
Or the annual report.
The annual report.
Ah, okay.
Talking about, yeah.
Now, you get the card telling you to go online to get the annual report.
Right, okay. Well, I, I look forward to that. But, um, I was, I was wondering if, if there's any plans to do something equivalent for sewer, because I've never seen anything like that for sewer.
Well, there is.
Well, the...
Is there an equivalent?
The reason why we send out the water quality report is because it's a federal mandate. I don't know that there's a similar, I suspect there isn't a similar mandate for...
Well, we do have a irregular Clean Rivers publication that goes out, and what we're, you know, since our, also, we're, we're trying to reduce paper usage, you know, the, again, the more communications we have with people, the electronic and not with paper, the more, the more information we can offer them, a menu of options, and from both bureaus, explaining what we do. And my sense is, and we keep hearing from very survey work, that what people really want to know is, am I getting good value? The media tends to harp on price, the public tells us they want value, and to make the value proposition, we have to do a better job explaining what are we providing them? How does our rate correlate to what we're providing? And then how does that compare to if you choose to move and move to Lake Oswego, or Tualatin, or Gresham, would you pay more or less? I think we need, we can always do a better job explaining that.
Do we have, this may be a wild thought, but do we have any interconnected, interconnections available that we could provide water to southeastern Oregon, to northern California, if we had to? None?
No, the, the former head of Northern Las Vegas Water Authority, Pat Mulroy, wanted to build a pipeline that would hook into the Columbia, but the cost of that is so incredibly prohibitive that it's just never happened. The, the closest we have in interconnections are to Clackamas River Water, Sunnyside Water, Milwaukee, that sort of thing.
Is there another way to ship it, David? I mean, for example, could you, if California has a drought, could we ship it by rail or by...
Ten years ago, I talked to some representatives from China who wanted to just pull up to our south shore wellfields and fill a freighter full of water and take it back to China, and they came to the conclusion that, again, that wasn't, it was just not, there's just not the economy of scale. They've talked about bladders, huge ocean-going bladders that you can tow, and again, they just, that's just too expensive to make it worthwhile.
So, yeah, it's real expensive, but I guess if it was real imperative, that would be an option that could be looked at, I guess, the bladder towing.
We'd sell them the water.
At some point, you have to, you're competing with desalinization, too, right? I mean, that's the thing, is whether the price point is above or below the economy of scale you can get it from.
We would love to sell more water, because as David Costley reminds me, the, the cleanest way for us to lower rates or stabilize rates is to actually sell more water. So, if we, if we could do it, even if it wasn't in a cost-effective way, we would let the customer decide that, it would be good for the system.
The other concern in the public's always been that if we sell water to Californians, they might not move here.
Okay, now...
37 million of them down there without water, 20% decided to move to Portland.
Here, I have to bring up one of the best signs at a basketball game I've ever seen, was during a Blazer game, they were playing the Lakers, somebody had a sign that said, "You aren't getting any of our water either."
I have a question on page 28 of the, hand out the five-year forecasted rate, two questions. First is, what's the bump in 2018 for the capital, five-year capital program?
Twenty-five million dollar jump there.
Let me look. I'm going to say it's probably a combination of Willamette River Crossing and the Washington Park. What year did you ask me, Commissioner?
2018, please. Those were my guesses.
We're anticipating spelling, spending $22 million on Washington Park reservoir, and almost, let's see, where's, almost $35 million on the Willamette River Crossing that year.
And the rate forecast is at 9.4 the year before that, and we do a bond issuance, is that in anticipation of doing those projects?
Partly. We are selling bonds in general every two years, and we sell up, we time the bond sale for the, around the time when the proceeds from the previous bond sale have been spent. So, it's, it's a timing issue, so that will be sooner, or it might be later, depending on how we're working our way through the current bond proceeds.
So, is there a way to smooth out the rate forecast so that there isn't that jump in 2017? Could we pay 8% across the board instead of going from 7% to 9.4 to 9.4, and then back again, or whatever the numbers would work out to be?
There are ways. I mean, we have the, we have our rate stabilization reserve, but what, what typically would happen is that if you use more of the reserve earlier, then you've run out of that reserve later, and your rate will be a little higher then.
But what if we put up the rate to 8% in 2016? We would presumably have then more than we needed for that year, and we could use some of the money left for the next year.
Approaches like that are an option.
Can I just throw one, one caveat into this? And, and Commissioner, you've, you've noted this in the past, when you look at the five-year forecast for BES, the forecast to actual rate is very, is very close, and has historically been so. When you look at the five-year forecast for water and the actual, it's, there's a much bigger delta. And, and so, these are forecast numbers, like, for example, this year, to you, the forecast for this, for this year was originally...
14.
Pardon me?
14.1.
And we got it down to...
7% rate increase.
7%. So, one of the questions that I've asked both bureaus to look at is to have a little more consistency in, in doing forecasting, and maybe look at BES's forecasting, which tends to be closer to the actual, and ask the question, why are we, why is it a bigger gap in the water? And, you know, some of this is, is variables, it's interest rate, it's, it's labor costs, it's the things that you, you can't anticipate, but some of them may be explained by water being perhaps more conservative in how they do their forecasting. And as you know, Commissioner, what happens is, you put out the scary numbers on the forecast, and that's what people focus on, not the actual. The, the reason that we're coming in this year below 5% for the second year in a row is we've, we've, we've brought the forecast down, but not necessarily by doing violence to the system, we've just taken advantage of historically low interest rates and lower, lower labor costs, other things.
And I would say we're also sort of at the mercy of Jonas, and, and I don't mean that in a pejorative way. Our bond, when we were anticipating a 14% rate increase at this time last year, we had a 6% bond sale assumption in our forecast. We sold bonds at 3.2%. That made a huge difference. So, when you look at our assumption for 2017, you see 6%, and as we get closer to that, Jonas works with us, and we lower that projection, we lower that projection, we lower that projection, and eventually, we sell the bonds, and I can tell you today, especially since I won't be here, that we are going to sell it for less than 6%. I can make that prediction, because I can't be fired for missing it, because I'll be gone by then. But, but that, that takes that into account.
Well, I was actually thinking of hoping that I might be here in 2017, and thinking then that it's a lot bigger increase than the previous year.
Right.
Is there a way to...
Well, I think your point, your point is very well taken, and so, the two questions we'll take up are, how can we get the forecast to actual closer? Because again, public tends to look at the forecast, and these, those numbers tend to be scarier. And then second, and so, and look at how the both bureaus do it, because BES, which is, has a much bigger budget, tends to be much closer to the actual. And second, how can we maybe smooth out the rates, so there aren't any bumps? And there are trade-offs, and some of those trade-offs in the past were things the council subsequently frowned on, like deferring things that we shouldn't defer.
I'm not, in fact, I was thinking maybe move some of them up.
Yeah, but we will, we will look at both, Commissioner, because I think you make a good point.
And one of the reasons why BES is closer is because a 1% swing for them is a huge amount, and a 1% swing for us is a much smaller amount. I mean, it is that one-third to two-third relationship that you were talking about earlier, Commissioner.
I'd just like to note for our viewers that I take it from Commissioner Fritz's willingness to have rates go up more in the next couple of years than in the previous, succeeding years, is that she's feeling pretty confident about her reelection in 2016, but she's expecting to do something between 2016 and 2020 that might make things more difficult.
Anything else, David, that you need to add, or that we have other questions for David, and I want to get Janice, I see Janice...
David, just take a moment to acknowledge the team behind you.
Do I have to name everybody?
We like to acknowledge the senior folks who actually...
Yeah, my minions, as I referred to them earlier in the week. The sub-minions are over there. So, I do have, most of my management team is here, here today. Chris Warner, our operations director is out, but otherwise, you do have, we are surrounded by the, the team. So, I have Susan Bailey, Ty Kovach, Mike Stewart, I'm going to see if I do this right, Eddie Campbell, Jamie Cuddy, Kathy Cook, Jeff Winter, and Jeff, Jeff Leighton, Jeff Winter, the Jeffs. They are an awesome group of people. They are the people who actually make this place run, and I'm sorry, Chris isn't here, he's actually out working at an, a conference regarding seismic resilience and preparedness. And he's the guy who makes sure that the water does get delivered to our taps on a daily basis, and that you can drink it.
Court force?
Just a very quick note, highlighting, as, as we mentioned, that projecting, projections come in high, they, they do come down, so it's great to see that. But to follow up from the previous conversation with, where there were some specific CUB BES recommendations related to cost recovery with some fees, and nudging back up to the fully allowed amount of the sanitary sewer SDCs, I checked with Cecilia, and those issues are not applicable on the water side. I think their permit processes, for prior reasons, are maybe just not as involved as, I think BES does more of that kind of stuff, so there's probably more opportunities for shortfalls to start to occur, but just as I got help from BES on evaluating that situation for them, I checked with water, and there's no applicable or comparable opportunities there. And so, they are charging what is fully allowed under state law related to the SDCs, and are, feel good about their cost recovery on the permits that they do charge for. So, just to round out that picture.
And Dante, anything else from your review, or CBO?
Just, just a quick comment to acknowledge that in the last couple of rounds of hiring through the apprentice process, that it's been the most diverse group of hires that I think Water has seen in the last number of years. So, kudos to that. And then, second, I know that there's the low-income discount program, and so, in conversations that I, I've had with David and some others, I think it's important to be able to not just say, "We give water to everybody," but also know who doesn't get our water, and where geographically, maybe there are shut-offs, there are folks who are using the program more, or are we getting the information out in the way that we best can? And so, I think being able to disaggregate some of that, so that we know where there are, in fact, problems geographically, or what communities are impacted, is something that we need to continue to work on.
David, you have some, you have some data, right?
I do. I'm so glad you, you, I'm so glad you asked, because we're very proud of this. So, we did a utility worker apprentice hire. They are the people that come in that we train to become our people in the field. So, if you're, if you come in as a utility worker apprentice, you will eventually have the opportunity to become an equipment operator, a truck driver, a backhoe operator, a crew leader, a supervisor, a manager. Every single one of those people have all started in the Water Bureau as a utility worker. So, the utility worker apprentice is our gateway into employment for a 30-year career. People do not leave the Water Bureau to transfer to another Bureau. They, they retire from the Water Bureau. So, in our last round of hires in June, we hired 12 utility worker apprentices. Five were persons of color, two were women, two were vets, one of those vets was a person of color. So, eight of our 12 hires met our diversity goals. Now, we just finished, Ty's group just finished hiring for the crew leaders, the maintenance mechanic apprentices, so those are the people that are, the, the people that are leading the crew that you see out in the field, and we just hired eight. Five of them were persons of color, and one of them was a vet. So, we're doing, you know, we're working our way up so that more and more of our employees look more and more like our community.
That's great. Good work.
Only just one thing to add. One of the reasons why we have such fun and robust conversations with Water is that David is unique among Bureau Directors in his transparency, and, and he invites the CBO analysts to his senior management team meetings, they pretty much share information completely and openly, and so, I would just actually thank him for that, and hopefully, his successor will, will take the same approach. It certainly makes our job considerably easier, and leads to a lot of fun, give and take.
I'm not sure Ryan felt that way.
Other questions, comments, follow-up needed for you? Great. Please, Commissioner.
I want to publicly acknowledge and thank the folks who work on the PRRV for all their many years of service. This will be the last budget cycle in which the PRRV plays an official role. I want to thank Ryan and the, the team at CBO for the, for the partnership. This is David's last appearance at a budget forum of this kind.
You hope.
He has announced his retirement, but he's also agreed to stay on a little longer, if necessary, to facilitate a transition. And we are extremely grateful for, for 37 years of service, 10 years at the helm of the Water Bureau, and he will be greatly missed. And finally, just a heads up, particularly for our citizen advisors, we hope to have the legal framework to council in late April, early May, for debate and action on creating this new oversight body. So, there's a team working on translating the recommendations into actually the ordinance that the council would then review and hopefully approve. Hope to have that late April, early May. to have that late April, early May. We'll then go through a process of recruiting members to serve on this body. And the commitment that the mayor and I have made is that this new pub will be operational for the next budget cycle. So, it'll be flying at 30,000 feet and working out all the details, but it'll be in connection with our next budget cycle. So, stay tuned.
Well, thank you all very much. We are done with this stage of the process.
We are indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.